Good evening. This is Sue Flynn and Shan Lee, our board president, is ill this evening. So I am presiding as vice president of the board. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 5:02. And if I could ask you all to join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, if we would all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I would ask board member Lyle Schmidt to read our mission statement tonight.
Our mission statement is, "The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community."
Thank you, Lyle. Now, at this time, this is a fun part of our meeting. We have a board celebration. I see Tara is on her way up. And it is, "Hope City Church and Texas Roadhouse have agreed to join the East High School Partners in Education Program. East High current partners include Bethany Bible Chapel, Elks Lodge 290, John Deere Drive Train, and Regions Bank." So we do have people from both Hope City and Texas Roadhouse. So if they would like to join Tara up at the mic. And we do have East High principal, Tim Moses here, or assistant AP, come on up with Tara. That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. From Texas Roadhouse, we have Chris and Melissa Pollan. And from Hope City, Mason Smith. So I will present both of you with certificates. And then after you say a few words, Mr. Moses, we can get a photo.
Good evening. We have tonight with us Melissa Pollan and her husband, Chris, from Texas Roadhouse. And they've decided to be partners in there with us. And we have Mason from Hope City Church. And they're also going to partner partnership with us at East High School. I'm extremely excited with the partnership as we continue to look for ways to grow our partners in Waterloo and at East High School. So I'm thrilled. I know I'm a Texas Roadhouse fan, as well as I'm a Hope City Church fan. So two good partners that we're bringing on board with us tonight.
Mason, you've got to say something.
All right, mine. I speak for a living, so I suppose I can say something. But no, we're obviously neighbors with East High School. And we have been for a long time. And it just makes sense that we say we're in the city, of the city, for the city. And to now actually build that relationship with somebody that's right next door is something we're really excited for. So we're excited for whatever's next.
Have you been involved at all?
What's that?
Have you been involved at all?
Yeah, so we did a little bit with football team last year. We did some food programs, kind of some food before the games, like we would have meals over at the church forum and things like that. But we've just done a couple small things here and there, but we're excited for kind of next big steps and whatever that looks like.
Very good.
Yep, thank you.
Now, Texas Roadhouse, you have to say something.
I told them, were it not for COVID, they would be passing out rolls and butter.
You can bring that when COVID's over.
I definitely will.
Awesome.
I'll say a few words, Melissa. You're very involved in some of the other schools partnerships, and they have students at Orange.
Yes, I have two boys at Orange. We're just really excited. I love partnering with the schools. I worked for the schools for a little bit, and I have kids in school, so I love it.
Go down to Mike's. Sorry about that.
I love all the different partnerships we have. I'm really excited to work with Tim. I've known him for a while, so I'm just super excited to make it official and cut through the tape, I guess.
Well, thank you, both organizations. We are really excited. It's perfect for Hope City and it's perfect for Texas Roadhouse because we love your food. So that's great. So thank you both. And Tara will get some pictures. And we really appreciate it. And we look forward to many years of a great partnership. So thank you. Thank you. Our next item agenda this evening is another board celebration, actually. And it's the 2019-2020 Athletics Accomplishments in our District. And we have Dan Huff, who's our district's athletic and activities director here. And also, Tim Moses gets to come back up to the microphone and give us a little bit on this excitement of how well our teams have placed in different arenas this past school year.
Well, first off, thanks for having us. It's kind of been a long time coming. We had just a really, really great winter season last year. We were really fired up. Things were happening. And we had unbelievable, one day, I remember in the Courier, you know, it's two or three big time pictures of one team, one state, one team's going to state. And then everything with, you know, kind of shut down with the COVID. And we didn't really get to properly, I know the board in the past, I know you guys would probably love to have, we would have had all the teams here and the players and the coaches and get their rightful due. That didn't happen. And so we wanted to make sure something happened because those were, we had some really, really outstanding accomplishments last winter season, and in fact, even in the fall as well. But I'll talk a little bit, Dr. Pappas would be here for West High, but he's got first day of practice here. He's not going to give up at practice time very easily, I don't think. So I tried to twist his arm, but you know, hey, maybe that's why you have the longevity. And he's one of the ones we're celebrating tonight, one of his teams. So first off, we had East, I'll let Tim talk about East High Bowling. So I'm going to let Mr. Moses here talk about the great season East High Girls Bowling had last year.
Okay, thank you, Dan. And again, thank you guys for having us. East High Bowling Team, of course, won the girls' state bowling title last year. And if I'm not mistaken, I think they either have placed in the top four or five, maybe the top three the past four years. So it's a really good program that Coach Hoing and Coach Weber have established at East High School. They continue to work hard. They continue to grow the program and recruit kids. So it's a very exciting time. I've never been to a lot of bowling matches because I wasn't in this position before, but I'm extremely excited about the opportunity now as being the athletic director to start attending these bowling matches. Because again, thanks to Dan and all that he's doing with the Waterloo Coaches Academy because I think our coaches are really starting to buy in and to develop that championship mindset. So it's starting to spread. And again, I'm excited about the bowling team and I'm excited about our other athletic programs as well.
And we're excited about what Mr. Moses is doing over at East High, too. But a couple of things about bowling. Not only were they state champions, the girls, they were the MVC Divisional Champions, and they had the individual state champion as well. And we kind of like to think of ourselves as Waterloo is the bowling capital of Iowa. It really is. I mean, it is, we're a bowling town. Some adversity last year, right before the state tournament, as you know, Maple Lanes had that unfortunate fire and went out, had to shut down for a while. From what everything I gather, talking to our bowling people, it's going to come back stronger and better than ever. We do host the state championships right here at Cadillac Lanes, boys and girls, all classes for the last several years. We're doing it again the next, this coming year. So we're excited about that. Moving on to West High, last year, the West High Boys Bowling Team put it all together at the Cadillac Lanes and won the state championship there, their first, I believe, ever from West High on the boys' side. So pretty exciting to have two state championship teams right there at the end of the season last year. Then moving on, in recognizing our MVC Divisional Champs, there are 16 teams right now in the MVC, and they divide up into eight team divisions. And last year, we had three division titles. We haven't had that in a long time. We had East High Girls Bowling won their division. West High Girls Basketball won their MVC division, as did West High Boys Basketball won their MVC division. There was a lot of excitement in the air last year during February and March. It was just really exciting to be a part of. And then to have a couple busloads go down to Des Moines and cheer on the Wauhaw Girls as they made it to the final four. Had a big win over Cedar Falls, which was always nice. Just friendly competition. And so that was exciting. And we took some buses of eighth grade girls, basketball players down from all four middle schools to, so they could see what that next level and what they can aspire to. Once again, we're just excited about what's going on and wish all of our players could have been here. I know you would want them here and be able to thank them and congratulate them in person. But we also did this year at our Coaches Classic, all of those coaches, head coaches and assistants, the head coach were given plaques memorating their state championship with their team picture on it. And the assistant coaches were all given certificates with their accomplishment and the team picture. So we are trying to promote things that are going on, and we're excited. And hopefully, we'll be able to do, I know we'll be able to do one in a month or two with a nice thing that happened this fall with West High Football, but we'll get to that here a little bit later.
So how do you recruit kids for bowling? I mean, I'm assuming most kids haven't bowled.
You know, there's a really strong youth league.
Oh, there is?
In Waterloo. There's a really strong youth league, and some of our coaches are involved with that. We do get a few bowlers, not many, because Waterloo has just got a great tradition of youth bowling and leagues, you know, Saturday morning leagues. And all of our bowlers, for the most part, have been involved in youth bowling leagues.
But then the Cadillac bus was the, my kids rode that, the Cadillac bowling bus for years. So yeah, it was sad when that stopped, but it really did set them up to do it. And one of my friends, her daughter now, is bowling for Hawkeye.
Wow.
And I would add that a lot of time, it is your friends that get you in because my son had never bowled in his life, and he had some friends that bowled, and he wasn't doing a winter sport. So he did it, and he loved it. He loved it, so.
There's something called a Unified Champion School, and we're looking into that. It's with the Special Olympics program. And East High has done a great job over the years. They've got a group of students who participate in bowling, right? Practice with the team every day, go to the matches and whatnot, and are participating and kind of creating what we call, what's called a Unified Team. So that's another cool thing about bowling. Once again, it's exciting to be up here, and we thank you for your time to recognize this. Also, big weekend here for our swimmers and divers. We've got probably a bigger group than we've had to state in quite a while with two relay teams, top two divers, and then one of the ones, she was just named district swimmer of the year in Carly Coffrin. And our divers are, you know, Lauren, Kimball, Avery, Hogan, and we've got some relay, and I probably should have not started names because I'm not going to know the other names. But no, we're excited about a lot of, you know, we're excited about what's going on. Our coaches are working real hard and, just like everybody, trying to make the best out of these crazy times in COVID and just, you know, one day after the other. So thank you for all your support. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you. And please give back from myself and I'm sure the entire board, you know, our thanks and congratulations to all the coaches and just that it's a thankless job, but they're huge role models to our kids. And it's a very important aspect of education.
Oh, absolutely. Well, thank you. I will make sure to pass that along.
Now, next, another board celebration. And this is the John Deere donation to the Waterloo Career Center. And Jeff Frost is here to talk a little bit, but it's pretty exciting that John Deere donated $60,000 in tools and equipment to the Waterloo Career Center Advanced Manufacturing Program. The tools will be used to upgrade components within courses in the advanced manufacturing pathway and allowing the students an opportunity to upgrade their skill sets. So I would entertain a motion that the Board of Education accept with gratitude the donation of $60,000 in tools and equipment from John Deere to benefit the advanced manufacturing program at the Waterloo Career Center. Thank you. And now we have Jeff here to just fill in all the details.
Well, there's a lot of details in 18 pages here, if you've went through this document at all. Again, the biggest thing is just John Deere being a great partner with the Waterloo Schools and our current technical education program, specifically at the Waterloo Career Center. I think if you look through this list, I think there's like 520 actual different parts or pieces that they're donating. And if you take the number of parts within those items, there's thousands and thousands of pieces which add up to the $60,000 worth of equipment and supplies there. So again, John Deere has been a tremendous partner with us over the years. And this is just another way they acknowledge that collaboration and that partnership. And I appreciate all they do, and I appreciate you guys accepting this on their behalf. Questions?
I don't have a question, but the one thing I might note is that when we opened the Career Center and we started taking official sponsors, John Deere was our very first official sponsor. So truly, they have been with us from the very beginning. I think we have 20, 25, somewhere in there, official sponsors, but.
We have quite a few signed, just this COVID thing's kind of slowed that down. But I think we have, yeah, there's near 30 actual wannabe partners, but we just have to sign them. But those are coming. But we have, honestly, on the other side of things, we have, you know, official partners, we have unofficial partners. I mean, really, that number's nearing 100 at least of unofficial sponsors. But like Jane mentioned, John Deere has been with us from day one. You know, I know early on, we were going out knocking on doors and just trying to explain what we were doing and how the business component was really one of the most important pieces of this concept. And for the longest time, we just didn't have any connection or, you know, they didn't quite understand it. And then when John Deere signed on, I think it started to steam, you know, snowballing there. And now they're knocking on the door. They want to be partners and understand that this is really the next generation of their workers.
So has this equipment been received yet?
No. I had to wait for official board approval before I was going to have it officially received.
And so what part of the program will it enhance? I mean.
Advanced manufacturing.
Yeah, but anything more specific than that? Is there any?
It would be more on the side of CNC machining and some tool and die machining, from what I understand. As I went through this list, there's, like I said, there's 520 specific different parts that they have, that they're giving us. And within that 520, there's like, anywhere from like one or two of a specific part to 300 or 400 of different parts. But I do know that it's tied to CNC machining. I know it's, a lot of them are bits and just different things in the manufacturing processes.
I see drill listed a lot. Drill, some type of drill.
Yeah, there's lots of cutters, reamers, different things. There's a tool holder in there or something as well.
Was this a wish list? Was this a wish list of things that you wanted? Or were they just donated, like, we're going to create a program around it or something?
Good question. It's actually stuff that for them is outdated, but again, in their world, things can get outdated within six months. So they just had these parts that they were getting ready for their next iteration of their parts and tools that they need for, to stay, you know, stay current. And so they came to us right away and asked if we wanted these items. I know Bob Plaguey, our instructor, went through the list and saw that they were very pertinent to what we were doing and would help us stay at that next level above, really where we need to be to be competitive and put out futures, our students to be future employees in the field of manufacturing.
Is there still a partnership to provide the guest speakers an internship? And does this affect that at all?
Absolutely. So this is kind of, we have, we're actually in the, really the fourth year. So we're actually beginning the new three-year cycle of our partnership with John Deere. They signed originally back in, I think, October of 2017. So with that original agreement, it's basically rolling over. We haven't officially resigned with them. But as part of that, we still have opportunities for guest speakers, tours out there, internships, externships. We have two students right now that are doing apprenticeships out of John Deere. So, you know, you run the gamut of guest speakers, all the way to us having future John Deere employees that are doing the registered apprenticeships with yours right now.
And that's a three-year agreement? Three to four-year agreement?
So when we sign our agreements, we sign them, we set them at three-year agreements. And then right now, for the first cycle, I think there were 10 the first year. I'm going back and reaching out, and we're just updating. I don't know if we have to do another official signing or not, which we may in some cases because I can tell you, like, one of our first three or four partners was like Unity Point. And Pam Delagardel, their CEO, has said that she wants to kind of raise the bar with what their partnership looks like and what their donation looks like. So we'll sign an official agreement and we'll bring that to the board for a celebration also. But typically, you know, for bigger ones like this, they do get kind of highlighted because 60,000 is a pretty big deal, kind of like Mid-America last year with the $100,000. And I know when the Unity Points, you know, Unity Point right now is just swamped, but I know that will be coming before the board for a celebration because it is a very distinct one. Not that the other partnerships aren't at that level, but there are some, you know, when they're giving, you know, $50,000 of cash or $60,000 of supply, that's pretty substantial. So it deserves special recognition. But again, I don't want to downplay all the other partners because they all have a huge role in what we're doing, too.
Yeah, we love our partners.
We do. And actually, if you think about it, the purpose, really kind of the rollout of the WCC is kind of the next piece is career or an internship into, where maybe the partner will pay for their college and scale them up and then go on and work for them. So, you know, the partnership is really, to me, the biggest component of the backside of the WCC.
Agreed, agreed. And I think it just enhances the experience for our kids because it's more real life. It's what they would do if they went to work the next day.
Which I think on letter H, I get to speak about when we get to that.
Okay. Hold that thought. Okay, well, are we ready to vote? All in favor of accepting the $60,000 in tools and equipment from John Deere for the Waterloo Career Center? Vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All against? Chair votes aye. Pass 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
With gratitude.
With gratitude. That is for sure. Hey, Jeff, with that, I just had a question. Do you send, like, John Deere a thank you letter or signed by all the students or something that lets them know how grateful we are?
We will. Actually, what happens is, is I wait, we wait until we have official board approval, just in case by chance you guys would say, well, we're not really sure we want $60,000 worth of free tools. So I just, I mean, I do want to take the chance on having a large supply of inventory be shipped to us. And then, not that you would turn it down, because obviously you wouldn't, but we wait till it's officially signed, sealed, and delivered there. Even though I think the document says October 20th, that's when Michael signed it, but we still wait for official approval before we do anything. And then part of that will be thank you.
Yes, we do also send a thank you on behalf of the Board of Education as well.
Perfect. Thank you. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is information from individuals and delegations. This is the opportunity where those who wish to address the school board may do so. We ask that you please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Mrs. Arndorfer, the board secretary to my left, will hold up a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining and a red card when your time has expired. At that time, I will ask you to please conclude your public remarks. Also, keep your comments respectful and construction. We are all here with the goal of trying to help our students. Also, please avoid criticizing the job performance of specific employees of the school district. Personnel matters are confidential and must be handled through the proper channels and not in a public forum. Finally, we provide this as an opportunity for public comments, but it generally will not be a back and forth discussion, especially on items that are not on the agenda. At times, we will try to help if we can with information before or after the meeting, but we have to proceed with our agenda board meeting and items that have been published. With that, I invite anyone who wishes to address the board to please come forward and start by stating your name and your home address. And I do know that we have one approval for Ryan, if you would want to come forward. We appreciate you being here tonight and state your name and address, and then your three minutes will start at that point. Thank you.
Ryan Stevenson, 920 Sycamore, apartment 6. A few weeks ago, my daughter moved back here from Charlotte, North Carolina. Went to enroll her in school, and after going back and forth to people in the registration, I was told that I would not be able to register her for virtual learning. And since we live in a low district, that she would be bused almost to Cedar Falls every day. I didn't have any other option but to send her to school. So now I'm driving across town two times a day. Two days after she started school, I get an email saying that we know that the district is at the threshold. And based on contact tracing, we don't believe that it was coming from schools. I think that the data that was used would have been sufficient if it reflected each building rather than the district as a whole, because they are individual buildings. So to find out that I can't do virtual learning and that the district is at the threshold and there's no intentions of going to virtual learning is very upsetting to me because I'm putting my daughter in harm's way. Since the outset of this pandemic, people have taken various approaches to the seriousness of it in their opinion. And I just don't feel like the district has made the best decisions. The reason why I say that, because I have a son that is in the Des Moines School District, and they have taken a completely different approach. And so for me to have to put my daughter through things that my son doesn't have to go through is problematic for me, right? Because as a parent, you don't, you parent all your children the same. You take the steps and precautions to make sure they're equally safe. I know that last night, their school board came together to make the decision to apply for the waiver. So I would like to know individual data based on schools, and I would also like to know the board's intentions on applying for that waiver as well.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate you taking the time. And who would be the appropriate person to contact Dr. Lindemann?
One of us, either Kingsley or Stephanie, or at Kingsley's, raising his hand. We will definitely share. We can call you tomorrow morning or even step out tonight, either way.
And Kingsley is our director of human resources, and he is in the back. So if he wants to visit with you now, or you could give your contact phone number to him also. So, and we appreciate you coming. And you have a well-behaved daughter. I was just commenting on how well-behaved she is sitting there through this meeting of not interesting stuff to her. So thank you again for coming, and we appreciate your comments, and we will be in contact with you. All right. The next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. And tonight, that consists, it's kind of short, of four items. The first, letter D, is a minutes of October 6th, 2020 regular board meeting. Item E, personnel appointments and adjustments. Item F, bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings. And item G, appointment of the 2021 School Improvement Advisory Committee. Are there any of these items that board members would? Are there any of these items that board members would like to have removed?
G, please.
Item G? Thank you. And anything else?
F, is it Frank?
Pardon me?
F.
F. F. Okay. So seeing F and G removed, we will start with approving the consent agenda for the minutes of October 26th, 2020 regular board meeting and the personnel appointments and adjusted. All in favor of that? Oh, we motion to accept those two items?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Chair votes aye. Motion carried six oh. Now, we will move to item F, the bills due and payable between board meetings. And I can... Where's my bookmark? Here? Perfect. Thank you. The superintendent's, thank you for bearing with me. Superintendent's recommendation is the Board of Education approve the bills due and payable and the bills paid between board meetings.
So moved. Oh.
Second.
Second. Thank you. And discussion?
Yes, I just had a quick question about the silverback learning solution. I'm assuming that's online, Meta Edify, maybe? Do we pay that every time, that amount every time we buy that for the students?
I don't... Stephanie, do you know, is it, and actually, Michael's online too, we can ask. I actually don't know how we pay that. Do you know?
Stephanie, Dr. Mohorn is coming up.
Stephanie's coming up to answer. The question is about the Edify charge. Is that an annual charge or biannual or once every three years or what?
Yep, we got, we did have a three-year contract for grades three through 12. However, this year, with so much of the remote stuff and doing things online, we added first and second grade. So that's why we have a bill now, because we didn't have first and second grade. They didn't have the option to have that last year. This year, they do have it.
So do we have a contract for another, every three years, excuse me, every three years that we sign? And now are we with, yes, do we sign another contract with this payment with them or no?
We just added on, they let us add on to our continuing. They let us add that because we just added grade levels. We didn't revamp everything.
Okay.
Yep, so we got to add on.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, all in favor of accepting the motion of the bills due and payable between board meetings? Please vote now.
Aye.
Aye. Any of those against? Chair votes aye. Motion carries six zero. The next item that we will be discussing is the superintendent's recommendation to the appointment, approving the appointment of the 2021 School Improvement Advisory Committee.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. And discussion?
So I just really wanted to take just a second to thank everybody who's on that list. This is something that is so important for our district and to take the time out of their schedules to come to the meetings. We have parents, we have staff, we have just community members. I think it's wonderful that we are trying to be as inclusive as possible. So thank you to everybody who agreed to do it.
Well, it's possible that to the current, those teams, let's all...
Michael, Michael, can you mute yourself?
Okay, I think we have that technical difficulty, our technical interruption figured out. So I would echo that, Stacy, that I have served in previous years. And it's a very interesting committee, yet it also, it does a lot for the district. And I just also thank those that take the time to go because that's actually how I got involved with the school, working with the schools, was that was my first committee besides PTO or PTA or whatever.
Do you think there's any value in gender equity?
I do see it's broken down by ethnicity and like parent or child.
It's 28 to eight.
Women to men.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think lots of education is that way. I'm not saying that that should be that way, but I do feel.
So the goal is to, go a step further. How do we recruit?
I know. Thank you.
So every year, we reach out to the principals for recommendations from their schools. We always ask for equity on the lines of gender, race, but we do tend to go with who they recommend.
Hmm, okay. So if we have any male volunteers in the community that would like to serve on that, you know, as a community member, that would be a good spot to plug into and to learn a lot about the district and to contact Pam or Dr. Lindeman's office. And we would appreciate people and the involvement, so.
And while we do try to keep it to each building, so high schools have a certain amount of people that they can appoint, middle schools have two. I think high schools have three parents and one student. Middle schools have two parents. Elementarys are all allowed one. We do have a couple of community, just at-large people too. So we would always, we would always welcome community members to just serve.
Is it ever an option to have students serve on the committee?
They do.
We do.
Oh, are there?
Yeah.
Yeah, high school has one student rep along with three.
Oh, I see. Thank you.
Yeah, they've always had students, so that's awesome.
They've done an excellent job too, yeah.
Yeah. Awesome. Well, it's a good committee. So all in favor of approving the members for the 2021 year? Please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? None? So chair votes aye. Motion carried six zero. Thank you. That concludes our consent agenda items tonight. So we will move on to item H, which is on page 35. And that is the quality pre-apprenticeship agreement between Hawkeye Community College and the Waterloo Schools. And we have Jeff Frost here to also inform us of this item. And the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education accept the proposed agreement for a quality pre-apprenticeship between Hawkeye Community College and the Waterloo Schools. So moved. Thank you.
Second.
And a second. Thank you. Go ahead, Jeff. Thanks for getting.
All right. So, long time no see. What this is about is, so I kind of want to lay this out a little bit. So one of the things we see out at the Career Center, really to me, are kind of like three distinct pathways, I guess you'd say, that students are kind of following on their journey through the Waterloo Schools, through career and technical ed, and through the Waterloo Career Center. One of them is students that come in thinking they want to do something and finding out maybe that wasn't quite what they wanted it to be. So career exploration is definitely part of it. They might start out in one program and end up in two or three other ones over four semesters, which is a win because if nothing else, they've narrowed down what they think they wanted to do. And now they maybe have discovered what they want to do, which will save them money and time on the backend of things. Another one is, that we're starting to see more and more of recently, is what I would call cherry picking or micro credentialing, where a student has a vision of what they want to do in life and they know to get to this vision, that there's at least three or four different programs that have courses that I need to micro credential or to build up or to stack courses that are going to help me along my way. For example, we have a student out there right now, a West High senior, who has started their own business. And he is literally taking courses in five different programs. He knew he needed some digital, he needed digital interactive media, he needed IT web and mobile for a website, he needed business, he needed marketing. And he got all that up and he just picked and chose really what he needed to take his program to the next step. But the one that really, if you think about it, is probably the deepest and honestly, the best experience for a student would be the one, and this is where we really are working on creating and engaging and on career exploration to really help students, by the time they're sophomores, kind of understand really what they want to do. Because the longer you're in CTE and the longer you're at the WCC, the deeper you can get into a program. And the deeper you can get into a program, obviously that's saving you money on the front side because it's free college tuition, but it's also saving you money on the backside in regards to either you can get to a career quicker or you can get out of college quicker. And so one of these steps, in this week's weekly update that Dr. Lindeman sends out, I listed kind of the three big things that we offer opportunities for students in regards to actually leaving the Career Center at some point. So a best-case scenario would be to have a student out there, maybe five or even six semesters if they can work it into their schedule. And where they would get out maybe at semester two or three and go into an internship. They think I want to do this. And after two semesters, I'm pretty solid that this is what I want to do in life. But you know, I really need to get out and experience that. So we offer paid internships where they get 100-hour experience, 30 hours are probationary. And then after that, they have 70 hours of paid internship experience at a business or a company that they want to work in or in a field that they want to work in. And this experience is really, you know, that first step in, yes, this is something I definitely want to do. If they do that and the internship is successful and they really do figure out what they want to do in life, the next step really is a quality pre-apprenticeship. So we've already brought before you, I think last year sometime, the registered apprenticeship. I think we brought it in like, well, probably around this time last year, which is really the end game. That's the, I am definitely going into this career field. And as early as their junior summer into their, really for a year after they graduate, they would have a registered apprenticeship where they would be paid by the company. And literally at graduation, not only is that a receiving of their diploma, but it's really kind of a baton handoff from the Waterloo Schools to that business for the next year for them to be an apprentice, working for that company, and requiring the rest of the on-job learning that they need. Where once they do that after one year, they would be a certified registered apprentice in that field and would have the opportunity, if there's positions available, to be hired by that company or other companies and to really take the next step and have a great wage. But in between those two stages there, because really, once you get to a registered apprenticeship, you're pretty committed at that point. And you need kind of that intermediary step that really, okay, so I've done, I've done all these courses, I'm excited, I did an internship, I really think this is what I want to do. And now I just, I just want to, before I jump into a registered apprenticeship, which is really truly saying, this is what I'm going to do in my career field per se, they have this intermediary step and it's a quality pre-apprenticeship. You can be 16 years old and right now, we are bringing before you for your approval with us working through Hawkeye as the intermediary to have a pre-quality, a quality pre-apprenticeship in the areas of advanced manufacturing, in electrical, plumbing, and also sustainable construction, along with our nursing program. So what this does, it's kind of the earn and learn model. They would actually be taking courses still at the Career Center, but they then would leave part of the day or part of the time and go out and work for that business as a paid apprentice, quality pre-apprentice. Now, the biggest difference between this and a paid internship is two things. A paid internship caps out at 100 hours. And 30 of those hours are actually probationary. So it's like really a 70-hour paid experience. The other part of that is, we actually pay for internships on our side of things. So that's where that partnerships and money we get from them helps secure and pay for paid internships to give our students that experience. Once they jump into the pre-quality, the quality pre-apprenticeship, that's actually this business kind of committing their money and saying, we'll take them on. But first thing we're going to do is we're going to interview them. They have to do a portfolio, they have to do a resume. They actually go through the steps of doing the resume and the interview process. And then they can start at the age of 16 and do a quality pre-apprenticeship in these five fields. Right now, we have five. Ultimately, the goal, working with Hawkeye, is to get this in every single program. And really, the cool thing about this is actually it can be tied into the classes that they are taking at the Career Center. So I'll give you an example here. The one in the nursing field, and this is really, if you think about it, pretty, not radical, but pretty amazing. They actually, in this program, in the nurse's aid, they have to do their classroom work, which is 48 hours. They have to do their lab work, which is 16 hours. They then go out for a 48-hour clinical that is actually tied to the quality pre-apprenticeship. They will actually now get paid during their clinicals to, again, earn and learn. They will be paid onsite while they're doing their clinicals to become a CNA and to be able to do this. So we are tying this back into the courses that they would be taking at the time and then going off and working for a business in that class or course area or program area and get paid for it by that business. And then, again, really the next step after that is if they show success and things go really well, obviously that company, that business, is going to want to keep them on and they can sign up for the registered apprenticeship where they're actually committing and saying, once I graduate, I'm going on and finishing out my registered apprenticeship and that business will take me on and see me through to the rest of the way within that there. So it's, again, it's the intermediary step. But the biggest thing is, it's a great paying position to earn while you learn. And honestly, it's also your opportunity to get those professional skills or soft skills, people call them, of doing a resume. Interview is part of the process. You have to do an interview. And the more times you interview, the better you get at it. So you know, we want them to experience the whole gamut of truly crossing that line into the professional side of a career in these five programs right now. But again, like I said, our goal would be to have 18 quality pre-apprenticeships within this realm. So what I'm asking for is approval of this. And I should kind of differentiate here because there's kind of two unique things about how Hawkeye Community College runs their programming here. So we offer, what we do right now, most of what we do is through what's called their, I would say, their credit side. So when you think about a credit side, that's a program in multiple classes within that program. And then you can go on and finish up at Hawkeye Community College. This program is actually completed through their non-credit side, which is more their credentialing or certification side of things, which kind of sounds strange because you would think, okay, if you have credit, you want them to come through the program, you want them to complete and get their AA, which ultimately, they can circle back around to that. But what happens with the non-credit side of things is we can get them micro credentialed. We can get them starting to stack certifications and credentialing earlier and then still come back to us for a semester or two and then continue on the pathway towards the credentialed or the course side of Hawkeye Community College. So I know I've asked this question multiple times. I'm like, you're like two competing entities within the same organization, which they kind of are, but they're really not. Because ultimately, when it's all said and done, what they want is our workers that are ready to stay in this community, that are skilled up and able to walk in career-ready on day one. Whether that is completing their two-year degree, two-year degree to four-year degree on the credit side of things, or in some cases, a student could say, I'm going to take what I'm doing here on the quality pre-apprenticeship and I'm just going to get credentialed because I know my credentials will get me pretty deep into what I want to get into also. So it really is kind of a, again, it's the middle phase and it gives the students kind of the option of looking at the micro credentialing or certification side or, you know, keep, you know, going deep. And ultimately, what will happen is, is if you, either way, they're going to get to where they need to get to and have a great career out of it. So, questions?
What, you said there's five programs, right?
Correct.
Can you list them? Because what's listed on the pay, the...
Yeah, so actually, if you look there, it will start off with construction.
Okay.
And then within the construction program, actually what they do is they actually will take construction, sustainable construction. They will take the electrician and they will take the plumber. And those are three of them within really one silo or bucket. The nurse assistant one, which is standalone. And then really kind of the prelude to the registered apprenticeship is the assembler, advanced manufacturing one.
So it's five because of the plumbing and electrical? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. So what will happen is, is you will take that quality pre-apprenticeship and once you get into it, you would kind of select which route you would go. And obviously, if you're in electrical, you would take the electrical route. Or if you're in plumbing, you take the plumbing route. I know going through the multiple meetings with this, Hawkeye has multiple business partners lined up in these programs that want to get them into the quality pre-apprenticeship for obvious reasons. They want to get their, you know, they want to get their first opportunity with the students to make a great impression and hopefully... And hopefully, keep them in, interested in them and maybe take them through the registered apprenticeship with them. But if nothing else, they want to upscale and upskill students in these programs. Because it's a win for them if they stay in electrical or plumbing or construction or nursing or manufacturing either way. Because ultimately, the community needs all of them. And if they can play a piece of that, of at least keeping them interested in the electrical side of things. Obviously, they want to keep them as their own, but if it helps somebody else out, they know they've done their job. Because somewhere down the road, that's going to be paid back to them somewhere, some way, somehow.
Do you work with the kids to make sure that, that they're not going to fail when they go in for the?
Great question because there are a few times early on in our internship, internship model. Where we sent kids out that really maybe should not have been the kids, that would have been the placement. And so we actually have a process in place now where the instructor will actually help us identify students that are. That they would say would be ones that'd be a good fit for the next level at this point. Not to say that, you know, hey, a student's been out here for two semesters, but they may not quite have all the OJLs, on-job learning components that they need. Let's maybe wait another semester on them, but these three, let's get them going. And then again, to make sure that is successful, they actually have to go in and actually interview. And they actually have to earn that position. And actually, they may be competing against two other people in their class for maybe one position that's available. In most cases, there's going to be multiple positions available. But in some, there may only be one or two. And there may be four people that all want to do it. They are competing for those positions. And so it's a great opportunity to interview, to get out, you know, and just work on. And the best part about it is after the interview, no matter what, they all get feedback on what went well, strategies to help, you know, them do better. Obviously, on our side of things, we also work with them on those skills prior to setting them out to these, these opportunities too. Because we want them to be successful and represent us well out there too.
Thank you.
What do we know about the student interest? What have we done to discern student interest in this pre-apprenticeship program?
There is, so we are getting students now that are, I would say, busting at the seams, ready. They, they feel like, okay, we've taken three semesters out here. We're ready for that next step. My program doesn't have a registered apprenticeship. I've already done the internship in semester two. What else is out there? I've taken my courses. We have a lot of students that are really ready and wanting this next step or the intermediary, intermediary phase. Especially knowing that we only have one program right now that has the registered apprenticeship. So this next step, at least in five programs, is for five different programs that can take that next step and get them out of the building. And into a real-life experience there. Like I said, our goal ultimately would be to have, any student can take an internship in all eighteen programs. Right now, we would have five that can take the quality pre-apprenticeship. And right now, only one program can go on to the registered apprenticeship. Our goal would be, you would have eighteen of each of those steps where they would have the ability to get out and explore and see and, and, and figure out that. And really, the cool thing about it, so one thing that we talk about with the students a lot is, your internship may be this. You know, in, in a career field, there's so much within a pathway that, you know, they, they hear like, I, I like that. But I think I want to do maybe a NICU nurse instead of a, you know, general practitioner. And so we can set up these quality pre-apprenticeships more geared towards something that they want to, kind of narrow the focus a little bit more. As they get into the quality pre-apprenticeship. By the time they get into the registered apprenticeship, that focus has become pretty defined. I mean, they, they know I want to be a CNC or a die, you know, tool and die. They know that's what they want to do. So this is just another step to, you know, take them deeper and maybe more exposure within that career field. Other than the nursing one, which is purely for students in clinicals getting ready for their CNA. So if you think about this, they are not even CNAs yet, but they are getting paid as CNAs. Actually, they're getting paid more than a CNA while they're working towards their CNA. Developing the skills that are going to help them take their CNA and confirming what they're learning in their labs. And it's, you know, that is, what a win right there. I'm getting paid for forty-eight hours as a clinical, helping me build my skills. So when I do go back and take the CNA test, when that's done, boom, you know, I'm ready for my CNA test, even at a deeper level. Than maybe just through lab and, and my regular clinical work.
Jeff, you mentioned the competing, like when they're, you know, maybe interviewing, they're competing maybe with another classmate in, in the interview. Are they also competing with like Hawkeye students? And I'm asking that, is there like enough spots for Career Center students versus Hawkeye students who might also be competing? Or would that not happen?
This program is specifically for the Waterloo schools.
Okay.
Okay, so I talked about this weird dichotomy that Hawkeye has their credit side. And then they have their non-credit side, certification side. They are Hawkeye Community College and working with each other as the whole of Hawkeye. But reality-wise, there is some competition there. So they don't reach out to their, it's going to sound strange, but to students on their campus to give them this opportunity. But they are reaching out to our students, who are Hawkeye students also, for this opportunity. So this is an exclusive thing between us and the non-credit side of Hawkeye Community College.
Okay.
So it's not competing with a second-year sophomore on campus at Hawkeye Community College.
Okay, thank you. I just want to also just say kudos. I think the timing is impeccable to be able to do this, especially as a lot of students are preparing for their schedules and just to kind of know. So I'm hoping a lot of parents are listening to this to have this, you know, future opportunity as they're trying to plan and schedule things. So this is a really great way to veer into that future as they're planning.
And just, I'm going to let the cat out of the bag just a little bit. Because I'll be back, I, I have a feeling I'm going to be here a lot in, in the next two or three months. But another great thing that's coming down, down the road here is, we're working very closely with Hawkeye Community College and U and I. On what we call two plus two plus two programming. But really, it's a two plus one plus two program. Where if you take enough courses in the Waterloo schools, and really that includes, and one thing, I, I don't think people really understand. And what we're really working with our counselors on and really our instructors on, because they don't even understand it. They live in their silos. But we offer so many courses at East and West, Labor Arts, and at the Career Center. That if, if you can lay out your four-year plan and your schedule right. In some cases, you can take nine, or thirteen to fourteen college-level courses. And that can get you so deep into a program. Literally, you may have a semester or one year at Hawkeye. And then you can go on and finish up at U and I. So I say it's a two-one-two program. We call it two plus two plus two because, you know, ultimately, it is two years of Hawkeye, whether it's us and them. And then finish up with two years at U and I. The two prominent ones right now are mechanical engineering, which we're working on. And that's going to be one I'll probably bring before the board sooner than later. And then the, the big one is K, pre-K twelve teacher prep, which we're kind of finalizing right now. Where if you think about this, if you take, I think it's like, there's, there's eleven courses in the pre-K twelve teacher prep program. That if you, again, you have, it's going to take planning. You're going to really have to work with your counselor and lay out semester by semester. I need to get this course here. I need AP Psych. I need Fundamentals Communication. I need, you know, these six courses at West or East. But then I can get these five courses at the Career Center. And if I play this out right, I can go to Hawkeye, have one year there, and then graduate from U and I in two years. Now, here's the great thing about this program, and really any program that, that comes out of the Career Center. Is they have this thing called Last Dollar Scholar. Literally, a student may not ever have to pay any tuition until they go to U and I. Because if you leave and don't take a gap year out of Hawkeye Community College and it's in a high-needs area, which our programs are. Hawkeye will pay for your tuition, or the state will pay for your tuition with Last Dollar Scholar. So you can get out of the Career Center and East and West with your, and then go on to Hawkeye for free. The only thing you're paying is books and your fees. One year of that post-secondary, go to U and I for two years and walk out the door at the age of twenty-one. And three years of actual post-secondary time and be a teacher in the Waterloo schools. And that's really kind of our focus, is getting them to come back. You know, I'm working with Joy right now. We're trying to develop this Urban Academy, really recruitment of, of African-Americans and minorities into the teaching field. If we can, you know, people are like, wow, this is going to take a long time. We can actually get it to a point now, if we get the courses and schedules set up. Where they can get into a two-one-two program and get on our campuses within three years after they graduated from high school. And that's all coming. I shouldn't have let the cat out of the bag, but I guess.
Do we know that that path is available? I don't want to say available, but do we know that that path to taking those classes in high school? And the Career Center, that it'll align with schedules?
We literally have sat down with us and our, and our teachers and laid out, here's the Waterloo Career Center courses you need. So we laid out all eighteen programs. Here's the courses at the Career Center. Here's the courses at East or West. And, you know, I think the lowest was there's nine courses they could take. Up to thirteen or fourteen college-bearing classes that they can take on us to get them to this point where they would walk out of here. Really with one year and then two years after that, which is amazing. I mean, you're, you're literally cutting a year off on expenses. You're not, and honestly, it's not going to be a year because with Last Dollar Scholar, you would never have to pay tuition until you get to U and I. Which is such a win.
I guess my question is, without, without them overlapping, to be able to take those classes?
So that's what I said. One of the key pieces of this is knowing, and again, this is where us as a district have to do a great job of. Exposure younger K-five, you know, and I know this is a goal of Dr. London, been working with counselors, is career exploration. If we can get them in, in our middle school exploratory experience, and right now, we're creating this six-twelve articulation, vertical articulation. Where our students are going to have experiences in the high schools. And then they're going to have experiences at the Career Center. And our teachers are working all together to get them exposed early and often. So that by the time they're out of eighth grade, a student should have a pretty good idea of what excites them and what does not. And when they do their four-year plan at the end of their eighth grade year, or in November of their eighth grade year. If they have a really solid idea, they can sit down with their counselor when they are a freshman or at the end of their freshman year. And they can say, okay, here's what's got to happen, your sophomore, junior, senior year, let's lay it out. And if you take these courses, boom, you're going to, you could get out of here with these nine or ten or eleven courses. Go on to Hawkeye, Last Dollar Scholar, don't take your gap year. You don't need a year off to travel Europe. Go right on to Hawkeye, finish it up, one year there, and then two years at U and I. And I think there's at least five or six programs we're looking at at U and I with this two-one-two, two, two, two-two-two model. I don't, I don't know what to call it. Nobody really ever does. It's like, really, it's two-one-two, but we call it two-two-two also, so.
Yeah, we had this experience this year with the Last Dollar Scholar and it was very good for, you know, you know, for my son and, and the program he picked. So, I mean, there's a lot of programs out there that are using that, but I mean, that was a nice deal. And I would echo your, go ahead.
Well, I can tell you as a parent that's had two of their nurses, nurse daughters use that. And not them paying any tuition until they went off to one to Mount Mercy and one to Allen. It's, it's a pretty good deal.
Yep. Yeah, I would echo your thoughts, you know, one is, you know, we got, you're plotting your path there. But you know, if we talk about putting four-year, four-year plans together as eighth grade. Part of this element is also telling forty kids and parents and everybody that, you know, doesn't know is, be thinking about this earlier. Think about, if you're a parent, you have a sixth grade or seventh grade, you can be thinking about it now. Because one way to free up those opportunities, as Astrid's saying, is trying to, what, what classes can you pick up early? What classes can you pick up between your eighth grade and your freshman year? What classes can you take your eighth grade year that will open up space in your schedule later on to value those opportunities? I mean, that's the other thing is, the counseling piece of it is just as critical in middle school, or more critical. Because if you don't do those things early, the ability to fit that in becomes more challenging, so.
And really, that's, to me, I think that's on us as in a district to really educate. And, you know, me as the director of professional technical education, I need to be yelling this from the highest mountain so everybody knows, hey. This is what these, you can do this. And this is how you get to having no tuition until maybe you're a junior in college. You can get a scholarship actually, I mean, you want to talk about a win. You can get a scholarship leaving high school, get Last Dollar Scholar, have all these free college, and you can actually save that money per se and actually apply it towards U and I. I mean, if they give you the check right away, that's money that you can save and bank, put in, and still build up money during this year you're working at, out of, out of that. So I know we got off, but I will circle back around to the quality pre-apprenticeship. Because this is a big piece in that, because you know why? Because if they really find out they don't want to do it, they need, I mean, internships and pre-quality apprenticeships play a big part in that. I would hate for somebody to never get out and do an internship or an apprenticeship. And then get into a career field and like, oh, my gosh, I don't like this. So I think that's also on us too.
Do you anticipate more registered apprenticeships?
I, I do. I mean, I really, really do. I think we are working so closely with John Deere right now on really creating that pipeline and, and looking for the right student. Because honestly, when you make that commitment to a registered apprenticeship, it has to be the right person that knows they exactly, this is what I want to do. Some of, you know, sometimes students get almost to the point where that's, they think they want to do it. And then it's like, ah, I'm not sure if I want to make that commitment. So we have to identify. And I think that's why the quality pre-apprenticeship is going to be a big piece of helping determine. Whether or not students become registered apprenticeships or not. Maybe they'll get, maybe say, I don't know if I really need to or want to do that. But every little piece helps. It's just, it's all part of the puzzle.
You're kind of talking like these are lifetime decisions, and I don't think they are. I think if you, you know, if you're really committed and going to this apprenticeship and get hired by the company, that's fine. But three years later, you can be doing something entirely different.
Oh, absolutely. I think what they say.
It's not a, to me, it's, it's a entry point. They're all entry points. No career is over five years. No job is over five years within or, within the same company and the same department quite frequently.
Yeah, I think, I, I think that's, Jeff, I think that's where, where you were talking about, there are two things. Like they may, they may decide what they want to be, what they want, want to do and, and proceed that direction. Sometimes they go within one piece of the career and then they shift gears. The example he gave of maybe they want to be a, I can't remember what you said, the nursing thing. They want to do one thing and then they choose something else. Or sometimes they decide, they try it, and they don't like it at all, and they back out and do something else. So I think all three of those, we've, we have students doing all three of those. And I think that's, that's okay. We've said, sometimes it's as important to find out what you don't want to do as it is to find out what you do want to do.
But you know, I think here's, interesting point there is that, too, if you do the, you know, the registered apprentice, so you go into CNC machining. Okay, now you got your foot in, you know, the door of the company, you do those things. So many of these companies will have opportunities to go back to school on their die. And so maybe you want to start in CNC, then realize, well, I'm going to be a manufacturing engineer or something. And you, now you have that opportunity to still work in an area that's going to strengthen your skills for that next level. And may have a route tagged with tuition paid too. So I mean, they're different, you know.
Yes, you started as a CNC machinist and, and somebody says, you know, this, this guy is pretty particular, or gal. How about going into the quality program? How about going into the, you know, supervisor program? How about going into this? How about going into that? So I don't, you know, I just hope we don't, let's lead students to believe. If you're a welder, if you're an electrician, whatever it is, you're going to do that for life. I don't think that's the case anymore. You can if you want.
I don't think the stu, I think the students know that they're going, that's why students, you know, I, one of the things you see is this cherry picking. Because they want the full experience. They want to get, they want to grab from five or six programs. Because they want a fast career and they know there's going to be career changes. Great point, Lyle. If you watch that Mark Perna presentation, he talked about the young lady who was the valedictorian of Davenport West. And her counselor, her last semester of high school, her counselor, she wanted to just take a welding class, just for the fun of it. And her counselor was like, no, you don't want to do that. Take something that you're going into. And her counselor was like, no, you don't want to do that. Take something that you're going into. She took the welding class, and she loved it so much that Deere's hired her as an apprentice, and she became an apprenticeship welder. At twenty-four, Deere's seen so much in her, they actually sent her back for the business MBA side. She's gonna be running John Deere someday, I'm guessing. I mean, she's, I mean, so I don't think we ever limit opportunity. I think we expose them. The students are gonna figure out, you know, at some point. They could get eight classes deep into it. Here's the worst thing that happens. So you take, you know, Fundamentals of Oral Communication, Comp One, Math for the Liberal Arts. You take these courses, and you decide I want to do this. Guess what? Those are all great transferable courses that are gonna help you in one way, shape, or form somewhere down the road. So, fast experiences, I just, you know. But this pathway is also there for students that really, there are kids that really figure it out and can get deep into that if they want to.
Well, and I appreciate your passion, Jeff. I mean, you have gone off and told us on a lot of areas.
I know, I'm guessing Steph's timing me back there, too.
But, and again, I think as we all would concur, this is another excellent opportunity for a student, our students, and if they so choose this path. And it's an awesome opportunity, and not every kid is gonna get Dollar for Scholars or know when they're in tenth grade what they want to do. But it is another chance and another avenue that our kids can explore, so.
And Sue, one of the big things, I think, is just to know that, you know, between the Career Center and even your homeschools, there are so many opportunities to put all these courses together to get you so deep, if you want to, into whatever you want to do.
Right. And that's what I love about Waterloo Schools, so. So thank you. Are there any further questions for Jeff? Okay, well, I will call for a vote then. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Motion carries six oh. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, now we will move on to item aye on our agenda, and that is the visual arts. Just a moment, the visual, I'm an old-school person. The visual arts curriculum, and we do have Travis here and three additional teachers, I think, that have helped serve on this, that we will welcome you to the front. I'll get the motion on the table here. The superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education improve the visual arts curriculum adoption at a total cost of seventy-two thousand one hundred and twelve dollars.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. And Travis, if you want to introduce yourself and who you have with you here, and we look forward to hearing from you.
Sure. Travis Gerthosenall, I'm the instructional coach for Fine Arts here with the Waterloo Schools in that capacity. I work with music art PE health teachers, and I oversee our arts integration partnership with the Kennedy Center. This evening, I have with us Dawn from West High, Angela from Bunker Middle School, and Jenny Hirschman from Kingsley Elementary. They are just serving as representatives. The whole curriculum team could not be here for COVID mitigation purposes as most of, if not all of, the team worked collaboratively on this curriculum adoption and development. So I think I'm just supposed to give a little brief. This is, please forgive. I'm definitely showing my novice-ness here, I suppose. So the visual art teachers and I met at the start of this school year to address kind of an outdated visual art curriculum. The state of Iowa adopted the National Art Education Standards in 2017, and the last curriculum adoption was supposed to take place in the 2012, 2013 school year. Unfortunately, I believe that work started prior to me getting here, but it was passed over for other priorities at the district level. I'm not here to speak to the, to what those were. However, after speaking with Pam, we went back for previous board agenda minutes and stuff like that, and saw that our curriculum was not in past minutes, within at least the last ten years. So it's time. Beautiful thing is that our curriculum process is not a textbook adoption. It's more of using the national than state adopted standards to identify what students in art should know and be able to do upon leaving each grade level. Beautiful thing is that these teachers are willing to do everything and put their nose to the grindstone. We met, starting with professional development days last year, working at, looking at the 2017 adopted, or 2017 standards. And then throughout our various PD meetings, and then after school, and then one of the blessings, and it's hard to say with the closings of the schools and due to initial COVID numbers, or COVID responses, our art teachers were able to meet as a district-level PLC every Tuesday from nine to eleven. I would have Zoom, and I would just send them to breakout rooms, check in on everyone, and it was brilliant to watch their mindset work as the elementary folks worked to, K-12, everyone worked to unpack the standards, sort of look, what is the standard actually saying? Because many of those, if you've read a Common Core standard, or you've read any standard, it's awfully wordy, and you're wondering, what's the point? So these teachers went through and unpacked each of those and determined ways that they were going to address them, or ways in which they had already addressed them. In that process, the K-5 teachers worked to identify priority standards, as well as our six-eight art teachers, because their contact time is a little bit different than the high schools, where at high schools, you sign up for a course and you meet every day. So from that initial breakdown of unpacking the standards, the teams decided, these are our priority standards. We want students to know and be able to do these things by the end of first grade or sixth grade. And at the middle school level, they went by quarters, or at Hoover, there's a six-week rotation instead of a nine-week rotation, so that was kind of accounted for as well. Throughout that process, we went through, and we determined, okay, at the elementary level, we have a twenty-one percent mobility rate. How do we address that to ensure that regardless of what building, an art student is going to have at least an exposure to a specific skill or concept? The art teachers took that on with such grace, the elementary ones, and addressed that quite punctually earlier this school year. We were hoping to present in front of you in July, but then this whole pandemic thing took place, and we understand priorities of health and safety, and we would eventually be here tonight. So in that, in that dollar amount, we are counting for consumables and non-consumables. Consumables being the materials that we need for the curriculum to be enacted, and then the non-consumables are things that we don't often need to replace. We are also seeking a minimum per pupil of three dollars for each elementary student. Really heartbreaking thing was to ask what the per pupil was, and to have one teacher say, I'm lucky if I get approved based on my principal's values, and another to say, I have a PTO that does support in addition to what my building does. And so we see these disparities, and then more often than not, it was a dollar or less per student. Now, if any of you have ever dabbled in creativity, you know that a crayon, a box of crayons might cost more than that, let alone a classroom set of crayons, let alone paintbrushes, clay, these expenses. But while making the recommendation for per pupil expense, we are also seeking to be cost-efficient and put in one large kind of district-wide order from their respective budgets in the fall to take care of the size of our school. The numbers that you have in front of you are initial numbers based on what we took from their websites, but upon some conversation with our vendors, we get a bulk discount, and it just depends on how much is, what the spending thresholds are, and I cannot speak to those specifically. But some of the initial costs, say, a thousand dollars here, a thousand dollars there. And if we can take advantage of that on an annual basis, then we know that we can further support and maybe not have to make quite as large of a lump-sum purchase every seven to eight years.
Cool. How did you come up with the breakdown for cost based on grade levels? Like, I have two kids and a third that's graduated, and they did every single art program in their high school. Some of it, though, they had to pay for, you know, there were materials that they had to pay for. So how does, do you think that what you're getting is gonna be enough for the high schools?
It was based on kind of a wish list situation. I reached out to the teachers and I asked, what did you need? Dawn, do you think that you can speak to the current reality of being a high school art student? You want to come up to the mic?
Haven't talked to you since conferences.
No. So, since, oh, I'm not sure exactly what year, but when I first started at West High and prior, there was a lab fee, and there no longer is a lab fee. So it, that just, we have our per pupil, which is like, I think, at the high school level, three dollars and thirty-some cents.
Do you think that you guys have enough, or are teachers still doing, where they bring in their own materials?
We pretty much do that now.
So with this price of seventy-two, how long is that supposed to last? And I'm asking that question, that we haven't really looked at the art since 2013. So are we gonna revisit this amount in another two years? How, seventy-two is how long?
So that was, that was, I think the last time was ten years ago.
Right.
And it was just non-consumables. And every, and it was like every seven years, but I think it's been, I think it's been ten years now.
So there's consumables and.
That was just for non-consumables, and so we've never had one for, or it was just for consumables.
Okay.
Or non-consumables. So we've never had one that was just for consumables.
So approximately, how long will this amount last for, for the district? I don't know. I'm asking, like, you have seventy-two thousand dollars. How long will that last? When you were budgeting this? That, for four years, or that for? Every year, we come back and vote on this amount?
I, I'm not aware of.
Okay.
The seventy-two is, in the odd change, is this initial, like, I realized I can take that off. The initial kind of jumpstart, or like almost an EpiPen to get us back to where we could be or should be, knowing that at the elementary level, that's where our largest disparities are. So that was kind of our triggered area that we wanted to work with for that per pupil. In terms of revisiting, it's a great question. I think everyone planned with seven years in mind, and we're hoping to not have to prolong that to be longer. That being said, I think many teachers, art teachers especially, are very resourceful, and through various other funding opportunities, or the youth art team, or other organizations, we find ways in which to supplement. So I guess this order is a jumpstart, will probably get us that far, because it is predominantly non-consumables. Perhaps might be a bit short-sighted now looking at it. Just in terms of seventy-two thousand is a little bit less than other content areas might have. But, are you coming to help me? Cool, thank you. Cause I don't know things.
Lifeline, I love it.
I know some things.
So although the seventy-two thousand is what we're seeing right now from year to year, we still do seek teacher feedback and look, because, for example, I mean, for art, for band, for music, if this isn't enough, even though we have this, we will relook at that every year. Doesn't mean we're doing a full adoption, just like we adopt FPC or other curricular areas. This is a little bit different, but we won't hold to it just for the sake of holding it if we're finding data showing that we need more. So we may be back in front of you in two years to say, this didn't work, it's not sustaining what we need to for our kids.
So how far behind would we be on something like photography, in technology-wise?
If I.
They're working.
Yeah, I'm looking at, you know, some of the high schools, it's got a list for photography. How far behind are we in technology there, Ben? Cause that technology seems to evolve pretty fast.
Honestly, I don't have an answer for you right now, but I can sure find out for that specific course.
Yeah, I'm just curious. I mean, if we're missing twelve years, you think.
Ms. Conrad, she can help us.
She can, so here's our next lifeline.
Yeah, I can't hear, so you're definitely.
So I teach photography at West. They, prior to this year, use, we use, so we use Photoshop. We're a little bit behind on the software. It's a CS three or CS six. And I have the digital cameras, they're Nikon. Those, I received the Last Art by. So they're, the digital cameras that we have with, for them are seven, eight years old.
And I could share a little bit, too, because I was just out at the Waterloo Career Center talking with Todd Kern about the photography. So if students are starting courses, and then they take some deeper level or higher level courses, maybe perhaps at the Waterloo Career Center, I know that they're varying levels of equipment. And the other thing that I believe Hawkeye, when we were talking with them, you know, what they, what they sometimes say is, what you have at the high school is enough to teach the skills and the knowledge that they need to get that starter. And if they're going into another additional specific level, like the next level, let's say at Hawkeye or wherever they might go, then they're gonna get that next upgraded level of equipment. So I think the answer that you're giving, and then taking what Todd Kern would say about some of the photography and the industry standard of Jeff left, but the industry standard software that accompanies, that when you put that all together, as students go on to those next levels, they take your class, and then they follow up, and they follow up. They get a different level of equipment at some of those, if that helps.
Ms. Conrad, like Josie's taking photography, I think, next semester, right? So how much is she can be able to learn if she's using technology that is that old? Cause she's not gonna continue on.
It's really not, like, it's really similar, the Photoshop. They're really similar, and what I was gonna say, too, is the UNI students in the communications and in photography at UNI, most of them, they use their phones. So the iPhones are almost better than a lot of the digital cameras. But also, they use GIMP, which is.
What's that?
It's really comparable to Photoshop. The students at the high school level are not able to download, it's an app. They can't, they can't put that on the Chromebooks, but they can use it on the desktops that we have. And it's almost exactly the same as Photoshop, and they use that at the professional level, because it's free. Which is, yeah. And I also have a darkroom, so they learn old school with me, too. So they go all the way through it.
Would you want that to be able to be on Chromebooks?
It's not available because it's Linux, so what I use, what I've been using when we were shut down and I was virtual, was, it's called PhotoPia. And they don't need to, it's not nearly as good as GIMP, but GIMP, I don't know that they're, I've talked to Ron about it, and I don't know if it's possible to do that on it, because it doesn't, the Chromebooks don't have Linux.
Two operating systems.
Yeah. So, yeah, but we can, we, they can use it on the desktops. So I take them to the IMC, and they can use them in there.
I don't want to put you on the spot, but are you, as a art teacher at West High, are you comfortable with the equipment you have?
Am I comfortable with, I'm sorry?
Are you comfortable with the level of equipment that they're using?
I am, and I.
Could it be upgraded? Are you, is it sufficient?
The only thing that I would, would like to see would be additional digital cameras, because right now, I have, I started out with eight, and I'm down to like six that work. And then I have, if I have a group with twenty-eight or thirty kids in there, they have to share. And so this semester, they're, they're just using, I'm just having them use their phones. And so this, this semester they're, they're just using, I'm just having them use their phones. Obviously, because I'm not going to have them share the, the cameras.
What about your other classes though, that you teach?
So I, this semester I have fundamentals of art. I teach graphic design and then, um, which Josie's in.
And Mallory's in fundamentals.
Yeah, and Mallory's in fundamentals.
So do you feel like you have enough, like, I think that's what I asked, or was asking, as a whole, do you feel like you have enough?
Yeah, I think we have to be careful getting into class specific stuff. I mean, because we're looking at the curriculum as a whole.
Right.
And, and you know, the classes as a whole and enrollment as a whole right now. But that's what's before us, you know, but if there's specific needs, I think we could, you know, have a wishlist and, you know, I mean, go to administration, partners and ed. I mean, there's options I think available, but I think right now we're looking at adopting the curriculum. Is that not how?
Sorry, I think so.
Yeah, no, just, just-
I think that, that what we've included in there, um, as far as like just rulers, just basic things that we would, yeah. And, and that would cover all of ours.
It seemed like what you said, it was being attached.
Yeah.
So I'm not clear what this motion is about. Uh, prove the visual arts curriculum adoption. To me, what I think I'm hearing is the curriculum adoption itself is non-financial. It's a matter of defining the areas of focus and the performance standards and so forth. And then the dollars come in for what I'm thinking I'm hearing is long-term consumables such as a digital camera, but not short-term consumables such as crayons. How far off am I in what, the pieces of this, how they fit together?
Uh, the, for the curriculum to be adopted and implemented successfully, the majority non-consumable, uh, request would need to be met. Did I say that? Oh, did that make sense?
And the non-consum, define non-consumables.
Non-consumables, um, I, I guess you said it really well with, um, long-term consumables. Like, things do break down eventually.
Yeah.
But the non-consumables, um, would be such as rulers or paintbrushes, um, things that do deteriorate over time or break down over time. Um, I guess that that's, those were the working definitions that I was given upon, um, working through this with the art teachers.
So then how about the short-term consumables?
There are some short-term consumables in our wishlist, um, specifically, I think there's some clay, there's markers, um, crayons. Um, those are ordered in larger quantities though, but they don't have quite the, the bang for the, or the cost.
Okay, so all this stuff supports pretty completely the curriculum adoption?
Yes.
Okay.
But logically, if we looked at this seventy-two thousand, you're not going to buy a lot of Nikon cameras for seventy-two thousand dollars. So this is the basics, but my question is, you're saying three dollars per student. Okay, is what you're using as a number. Just say ten thousand students, that's thirty thousand dollars. Okay, so this would be a little over two years of consumables for students. Is that what you're saying?
Um, I need to double check the, the enrollment at the elementary level because the three dollar per pupil is the recommendation at the elementary level, not K-12. I think in my original narrative, I did have middle school, but after visiting with my middle school teachers, they felt okay and well supported. By their building budgets.
And I think if we want to, um, dig into that further too, I, I believe that we could look at the, the annual budgets and the annual supports for, because if you're a math teacher, you're going to have some additional monies every year. If you're a, I know our, I work with the counselors and so we have a counselor budget, of course, because you, you adopt curriculum, but yet there are annual expenses. And so our teachers are going to have an annual budget from their buildings that they're going to do that. So I think what, I think what, and I didn't, Stephanie can, can weigh in if she has additional information here. But when we're, when we're doing a budget like this, if you're doing a math curriculum, you're not only, you might be buying textbooks, you might be buying workbooks, you might be buying the manipulatives that go with it. It's, it's all the things that you're going to need. Art is a little bit different because the manipulatives that you would buy for a math curriculum, you're going to use every year, right? They don't, they're not consumable. So in this case, we're saying, hey, here's the, here's the starter kit and we're buying in quantity as part of the curriculum adoption, but yet we know it's not going to be enough to sustain. So there will be annual budgets. If you're curious, I know Michael's on the line. We could, I don't know, that's probably putting him on the spot right now. He might have to look that up. But we could get you that information on what elementary art teachers get for a budget every year and what they're, you know, they're, what they're, what they're submitting and what they have.
I do have that information as well that I can share.
We can forward that, sure.
I'll forward it tomorrow morning, um, because there are some that have a specified line item, um, budget. And then there are some that their buildings just pull from the general fund. So that would take a little bit of digging, maybe on what they purchase it on to fully develop, um, a more accurate number.
I do want to say, I don't want it to be another, this long a span. I think like, this was a long time coming and I don't want it to be another time, like, twenty-twelve's a long time for us not to have an art curriculum and to approve and then seventy-two thousand. And then you put the numbers to it, thirty thousand dollars is not going to get you very far, you know? And so I, I just hope that as a board or whoever's next on the board, I just hope that we're not buying and approving another bill, another twelve years or whatever. That's a long time to not have supply for students or not have an art program or whatever that might be. Um, and if we're using old equipment, even though it's suffice, I, I'm just, you know, seven, eight years old and software is a long time. Um, so I'm, I'm just hoping at the board that, I know this is a starting kit, but I don't want it to start again in six years.
We should be trying to train this host with candor to current-
Correct.
Current technology and stuff.
Well, and even I just foresee that this could be a wonderful opportunity to present the arts within our district and even do a fundraiser, like buy a box of markers or, you know what I mean? That we could get a huge supply of this at the start of a school year because I don't have kids in school now, but I see markers for forty-eight cents and I'm like, I wish I could buy markers. You know, so I mean, I think we have an opportunity that we could, um, fill up the coffers a little bit too with donations.
Do, do you feel though, we were talking about, you talked earlier about the equity piece. So, do you feel that with the budget and the way it's broken down, that you're going to have, um, equitable supplies in every building?
The way this, like this-
I mean, I know, cause you were talking about like PTO donations and stuff.
I think the biggest area we found was the elementary level with the biggest. And I think, um, I fortunately am at a school where the PTO was very supportive. I'm like, they get it. But it's also, um, somewhat expected that they pitch in every year, which is not, there's no PTO at other schools that is supporting very much. And then I'm still getting this much and the PTO is almost expected to be pitching in more. So, um, and then, I'm sorry, I stood up to talk about, uh, the supply and the purchase and everything. And then I think Dr. Lindeman said it and I didn't know if I should sit down again or not. I'm like stuck.
Right.
Um, but I think you hit the nail on the head with, we put the seventy-two thousand dollar amount together and we went, some of those things that I couldn't afford to get a class set, you know? So we're building it up slowly over years, like, oh, I bought twenty new paintbrushes this year. And then, you know, two years from now, I'm going to buy twenty in a different shape. So we've been really good at like, making things last, trying to work within that. Um, then that seventy-two thousand is like some of these upfront, like temper cakes for the elementary students. It's a class set, it's the trays, it's the brushes to go with it, it's the twelve different color set. And those, mine lasted about three years totally. Um, the certain colors always get used up faster, so we-
So I'm sorry to interrupt, but what did you do four years ago then, when yours ran out after three years?
Um, I asked our PTO and they purchased ours when I went to Kingsley. And they ran out, kind of ran out last year. I, uh, chiseled all the little bits of the last of these dried up temper cakes. Um, and I started making homemade temper cakes, using the liquid tempera and putting them into egg cartons. You know, really kind of do it yourself type of things. Um, if this wasn't approved, I would be going back to my PTO.
I, I appreciate your creativity and your resourcefulness really.
We get that.
At the same time, I think we should be supporting-
One hundred percent.
Yeah.
Right. And we kind of looked at that seventy-two thousand, that'll get us started. And then when I do run out of, you know, red in two years from now and the yellow in one year from now or three years, those can be supported in that per pupil minimum down the road. But it's not an entire set of something that's four hundred dollars to buy upfront.
So we're talking one dollar per student or two, three dollars a student in per pupil minimums? In no case are we talking student fees, correct?
Correct, no.
I was going to say, yeah.
That's just the number, the base number they use.
I, I figure something important, you know, with the equity piece, could not every PTO is not going to go to provide that and so.
Right, but what Michael would tell you, Mi- Michael, are you listening? Can you hear everything that's going on, talking about the equity and how we supplement with that? Because that, that is really important to us that we do that. So we could give you multiple examples of if we, we might, we're funding the same thing across the district, but where we fund it from might be different. Some of it might come out of general because there's not a, you know, there's not a PTO if somebody needs something. So that equi, that equitable resources is really important to us. Um, we do the same thing at, you know, at the high school. If the, if the gates aren't the same, then we're going to, the, the money ends up being the same per student, but where we fund it from might be different. We may go after a grant, maybe we may use general. Michael, do you have anything else to add to the equitable, uh, funding for buildings, for supplies or for students?
Well, uh, yes, I am listening and there's a lot of good comments and a lot of needs that have been expressed. And, um, I didn't know, for instance, in this particular, uh, situation, is this is how they were going after this, um, approval, but that's fine. It's not normally how the board approves it like while we're saying, but the idea of it, I understand that to get some equity across the building. Because right now it is left up to the principals to decide how much they give different departments. And there is some differences on how some of them view things. But I think the whole, uh, issue of addressing this again from the, uh, equity side of it, that it is, um, more fair across there, I mean, that can certainly be addressed. And there is, um, several different funding sources that could be looked at with this. Um, but it, it really just needs to kind of be a, uh, agreed on, you know, through Stephanie's department and Travis and of saying what level of support that we want to give, uh, the visual art program. So that's just something that needs to be established and then we can work from there.
I, I do appreciate that and I, I appreciate this coming to us. Um, but I am really interested to see what the budgets look like across the board. Because I'm, I'm really wondering what the art program looks at, at one school versus another school to get to this point. Um, yeah, so definitely.
So two things in full transparency, Travis has done this two years?
Yeah.
Two years. So this is the first time we have a fine arts point person. And that's really important that we have somebody. That's why you're seeing this now and you may not have seen it for a long time. Because it's, now we have a point person, so he can do all of the fine art. So we have that. Second, no art teacher, music teacher, any other teacher should have to go to their PTO for basic needs that every students get, period. We can, Michael has said this, I can't even tell you how many times since I've been here. We can find, we can always find the money for the things for, that students need, their needs. So PTOs should never, for anything that are, this is what we need to instruct all of our kids. So I just wanted to make sure that that point, yes, I can tell you, art budgets, what principals give their art teachers is different by building. That's something we're working on because it shouldn't be. It really, really shouldn't be. But I don't, and no one in my department wants any teacher to ever have to go to PTO for basic things you need for your kids. Absolutely not.
Thank you.
Absolutely not.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And to make you feel even better about, I, I, I feel very positive about the, the motion moving forward. Or like, I'm not going to say those words, sorry. I feel very positive about how this discussion has changed or has been presented. I reached out to other U E N's to figure out, what are you doing? What does it look like? One other school, um, in Western Iowa has a per pupil, but that is, um, about kind of where we're at with our, our folks. And other U E N's don't have this. So the commitment to visual art is just exciting to hear, like the, the great conversation and the, I, I almost wish I would have come sooner and just so that I kind of been like, okay, I'm going to take notes on these things and these things. And we have active parents clearly that, and, uh, folks that are, um, impacting, uh, this, this specialist area. And so, I'm sorry, I was a little excited because I was on the phone with U E N today and they were like, what are you trying to do? And I was like, well, it's, what's best for kids. And I think these teachers have proven it and I think the conversation had is proving it.
Well, and we thank you for bringing it up in this manner because, um, I think it has opened our eyes and we will be interested, um, to see how that proceeds when we get the information per, per building. But I, I do also that, like if, like you had an issue previously and you were out of something, where did that request go if you didn't go to your PTO? To your principal and then your principal would say, we don't have the budget?
Um, yeah, so they would say, we do or we don't, um, most of us would try to order a big order in the fall and that kind of set us up for the year. Um, and then sometimes, like one year I got an additional order in the spring, but that wasn't accounted upon. Um, I kind of looked at the PTO with some of the bigger things helping me out and then the building budget went through the principal as keeping up what we had. So like I went to the PTO one year with, um, the temper cakes and they did the trays and the whole sets and everything. Then the next year I went to get fluorescent art material and black lights and we did glowing neon art, um, which is kind of an extra and fun and different to do. So I've kind of bounced back and forth what I asked for, if it was a, something needed or if it was something kind of fun and extra. But otherwise, to my principal who has been very supportive, mine in particular, so.
Thank you.
And I think Travis, what you're hearing today is that, you know, with you being a point person and with us now having a district level kind of contact, um, I think that's, that's going to be the right step forward. So you can, I mean, I think you're hearing a lot of affirmation from the board as far as coming forward with, um, requests, if it's something that's a curriculum change. But of course, I know supplies don't come through the board, but we, I think you're hearing some direction in, in that vein to come forward and Michael is always ready to do that too, so we can allocate the money. The money can be there for what we need, so it's probably that communication vehicle. So now we've got it with you, so.
I just want to say, if you have them at the elementary, then you'll have them in middle school and you'll have them in high school. So you do need to start at the base level to keep students to keep, be motivated enough to keep them in art. So, yes, I love it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Travis or any of the other teachers?
Appreciate you for coming.
Yes, thank you all for coming and we will then vote on the motion, um, if we approve the visual arts curriculum adoption at a cost of seventy-two thousand one hundred and twelve dollars. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
After? Thank you for coming, we appreciate it. And the, our next item on the agenda is item J, which you'll find on page eighty. And on that, we will go to, I'm sorry, I'm all flustered now, sorry. Um, the superintendent's recommendation is that the board approve the application to the School Budget Review Committee SBRC in the amount of forty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eleven cents for special education administration costs associated with River Hills Consortium program for the twenty-one, twenty-two- for special education administration costs associated with River Hills Consortium Program for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
So move, second.
Thank you, and we have Evan here. Ivan, sorry.
I'm just here for any questions. I wish that Travis and the new group was gonna stick around for a little bit, could use that support and motivation. What's, what's up with this? What's up with this? No, just any questions that you guys have?
So I can give a little background to those.
Great, thank you.
So I was hoping for.
A few years ago, there was a very distinct, um, effort by the Department of Education to identify allowable special ed cost. Um, maybe to say politely that it was, um, being a little stretched in some of the areas that was being used. So it was a, it was a review to identify and there was quite a lengthy document and a lot of study that went into it, uh, to make sure that it was fair and equitable across the, across all of the districts in the state. And, uh, if you remember seeing the numbers that I've shown you in, in other presentations of the negative balances for special education, that was one of the concerns that brought this all to light a few years ago. So that's where, um, this came from. And, uh, part of that study was saying it is not, um, at acceptable expense to pay for administrators or administrator support, um, like the directors and, uh, um, non-admin support people that work for special ed, but they're not teachers or parents. Their salaries could not be charged to special ed, it became a district expense. Except in the case of what we're talking about tonight. If there is such a, um, situation that it is a separate school, it's a separate situation like the consortium here at River Hills and also the lead center is the same explanation. So I'm just gonna, I'm just going to lump the explanation of both of these into one. But what the state did allow to do in that study was say, if you did have, uh, a special situation where it was like a separate school that you definitely needed an additional administrator for it, um, the administrator's salary plus the hike in hypers, um, could be applied for to be taken out of special ed dollars. Uh, in other situations, which is actually the last, um, exhibit in the book tonight, when we're talking about SBRC, we're going after allowable growth. Um, this is not the case for special ed. It's just saying that these administrative costs can be charged to special ed, even though they're not normally part of special ed unless they are a special situation like these consortiums. So that's what this motion is. And if you look on page eighty-two and then a couple pages later on the lead center, you can see, um, attendance by enrollment, the ad- administrator's salary divided by all of the schools. So in our case, we have twenty-six students on discount for River Hills. So about a quarter of the cost of the salary plus, um, the hike in hypers is something that we can charge to the special ed budget. And that's what this motion is allowing us to do in the special, in the School Budget Review Committee. Is the, um, is the body that allows us to do this. They, they take the requests and they give the approval that special ed dollars can be used in this particular case.
Okay.
Where normally we would just have to charge that out of the general plan.
Thank you, very much, a good explanation.
So this means that, like, the one thousand six hundred thirty-eight dollars and six cents, that's just our, our, our part and then it's coming out of the administrative costs? Is that, am I understanding this?
Yeah, if you look at the bottom of the page, the administrator's salary is a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
So then it's divided percentage by the enrollment of students.
Do you see that, the eighty-nine kids, so it's, then it's a per pupil, yeah?
Yeah, I was just breaking it up per pupil.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause you tell them the eighty-nine, but then you add the hypers.
Do we have any staff there or does CF just run it?
Uh, no, the, the staff is, um, hired by the consortium to work. So, yep, so we are at the meetings and so they have, it's not a, it's an administrator of the building, but it's hired and by the, by, Cedar Falls is the fiscal agent because that's where the building resides.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. And in a minute, you're gonna talk, we're gonna talk about the lead center, but for that one, Waiverly Shellrock is the fiscal agent, so they're the ones who run that. But the consortium makes the decision, so every month there's, or not every month, but there's a meeting. And so, uh, we come together to have conversations about, yeah.
So if someone asked if they wanted to work at River Hills, how would they do that if it doesn't go through our district?
Yeah, they would, I would guess they would apply through River Hills School.
Got it.
Yeah, go to River Hills.
Yeah, I think it's either on the Cedar, or Cedar Falls website or the AEA website.
Yeah, they're the agents, so I think they run.
Thank you.
And just to, with COVID, how many of our twenty-six students are actually virtual or in the building at River Hills?
The last I knew, they're doing, uh, like A, they're doing an A-B schedule, but it's A days, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday off, and then Thursday, Fridays, B days. And of the twenty-six, the last I knew, we had about eighteen going, uh, in person. So they have a, they have a pretty rigorous program there, but it's two days a week per kid.
Um, one of my friend's son is there and he's, um, autistic, non-verbal. Um, and she's so happy that he can be back in a building because he was just devastated when he couldn't have that. So I'm really glad that that's been something that has been able to happen.
Yeah, okay, we all good with the recommendation? So that would be to, um, approve forty-nine thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ele- six, eight, forty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eleven cents for the, um, River Hills Consortium Program for the twenty-twenty-one school year. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, chair votes aye, six zero carry. Thank you very much. Now you're staying there for the next one, which is, the superintendent's recommendation is that the board approve the application to the, to the School Budget Review Committee SBRC in the amount of ten thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-seven cents for special education administrative costs associated with the lead, lead.
Lead Center.
Lead Center Consortium Program for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
So move.
Second, thank you. I think Michael, I think Michael, um, gave a explanation on that. It's just shifted a little is that Waiverly Shellrock with the Bremwood. And we have six students there, it looks like, and then you broke out the salary just as previously as that.
So it's the district that decides a student should go to the lead center?
Yeah, the IEP team would have that recommendation and then that process goes through, me as the director, and then we involve the, uh, AEA regional administrators. So it's not quite as easy as we think this kid needs to go here. There's a whole process that kind of has to get, uh, running before a child would be placed at a, at a special school.
So where does a parent fit into that?
They're part of the IEP team, so they'd be a part of every step of the way as they're having IEP meetings.
And what's the final decision? Who, who makes the final decision?
Say, with any IEP team decision, the district's the one that kind of is, uh, we, we write the IEP with the input of the entire team. So I'd say very rarely would we have like a, we think one thing and someone else thinks something else. Um, the goal is to have consensus around what's best for the child. And all of that would be supported by data. So it would be, you know, if we're able to make progress with the student on their IEP goals, uh, you know, then that might shift a conversation one way or the other.
And Lyle, there is a, there is a procedural manual for IEP meetings? And so if there's ever a disconnect with people on the team, the, you know, the parents think one thing or a teacher thinks another thing or the administrator thinks another thing, if there's, there's a process that you follow to do that and we, and we involve AEA, the Central Rivers, is at the table, so you're having a conversation about that. And we, we employ that, that procedure quite often, really, if there's a disconnect on what is the best path. Because sometimes it's clear and sometimes it's not.
Yeah, I'm guessing the academic team, uh, parents don't necessarily agree with the rest of the academic team would be the very many things. So then, is, is it the academic team that rules?
Well, I mean, it'd still be the IEP team. And again, so, and since I've been in this role, we've moved one student to the River Hills. Um, and that was all based on data, so we had a year's worth of data to say the things that we were trying, what we were doing, um, the progress that we were making, the lack thereof. And so again, at the, at the next IEP meeting, it was truly what's best for this child. Um, and the data was showing that we were just not able to make traction to make progress on their IEP goal.
Parents, parents do not have veto power then?
Uh, no, nobody really has like veto power.
There's a, there's a, a process as per this, the procedural manual and that's governed by IDEA, right? I mean, that's, there's a procedure, so if a parent doesn't, didn't agree with that, they would, there's rules and laws in place for how you would proceed with that. So, yes, no, there is not a, there's no veto power that says it doesn't matter what you think, this is the decision. It's, that's not how it works at all, that's governed by law. There's a lot of laws around that.
Mm-hmm.
Is the lead center K through twelve?
Uh, yes.
It is.
Is it residential or day?
So it's a combination, uh, Bremwood would be the residential facility and then the lead center would be the special school that the consortium works with for students that need to be there, students who need to be there for, uh, behavioral reasons.
Okay, thank you.
And just, uh, in looking at the, um, cost per pupil and the salaries, you know, the, it seems the salary for the, um, lead center administrator's salary is quite a bit less than the River Hills, is it? Oh, got it, okay, I see that now, point six seven, so that's two, it should be two thirds.
Because there's fewer students, there's, it's a partial, it's a part-time position and that person happens to be new because the person, um, had retired.
Right, okay, got it, okay, perfect, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, then, um, we'll take a vote on the board approving the application to the SBRC in the amount of forty-nine thousand eight hundred and six, oh, ten thou- oh, shoot, I'm on the wrong page. Ten thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-seven cents for the special edu- education administrative costs associated with the lead center consortium program for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, carried six zero.
I voted aye despite the fact that, that the cost apparently isn't accurate because it says it's rounded. It's rounded to the nearest penny on page, the top of page eighty-five. Special administrative costs per student rounded one thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents.
You got, you got point six seven, you got, you got, you know.
Point three.
Already using, already using two fairs or point six seven?
Thank you very much. Okay, our next item agenda is on page eighty-six, item L. The superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education authorize the administration to submit the SBRC application form to the School Budget Review Committee requesting twenty-twenty-one modified allowable growth funding totaling six hundred ninety-six thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty cents to be funded by the twenty-one, twenty-two cash reserve levy.
So move.
Second, thank you. Discussion, Michael.
Okay, this is, uh, back to the model where we have additional costs that has been calculated in the current year and, or it would have been additional revenue in the current year. And this allows the SBRC to grant us that, um, that allowable growth, so it can be added to our budget in authority. And then the next year, we, uh, fund that by the increase in cash reserve. Um, it is very important to take every opportunity of our authority that, uh, we are able to do. Um, but it doesn't guarantee that the board has to backfill it with cash reserve in all cases. Um, it does make the financial picture healthier, but it is always a issue of looking at the effect on the property taxes. So in this, um, exhibit that we address every fall after the enrollment is taken, there are three components that we can qualify for, for additional allowable growth. The first one, uh, number one, is just an overall increase in the certified enrollment. It, because it does, uh, our budget for twenty-twenty-one is from the two thousand nineteen count. So what they are enabling is if we actually had more kids show up in twenty-twenty-one than the count generated money for in nineteen, uh, we would get, we would qualify for additional allowable growth. But in this case, in twenty-twenty, the, uh, enrollment number went down, so there was no increase, uh, in this category. So that is zero and is not going to be in effect. The second category is for open enrollment because, um, um, this is the case that we had forty-seven point one students on the twenty-twenty enrollment that were not here in two thousand nineteen. So we did not get the money to be able to pass on to the receiving district. Um, so that's why they allow us to apply for additional allowable growth in the twenty-twenty-one year to account for the forty-seven point one students that were in the count last year. Um, so we take the forty-seven point one times the cost per pupil from last year because that's what we forward to, um, the receiving district, so six thousand eight eighty. So that comes to three hundred and twenty-four thousand, the whole forty-eight. So that's the second category. The third category is the ELL kids. And these are the kids that, um, are getting excess, uh, are accounting for excess costs because they are receiving ELL instruction after the five years. Um, and there is two hundred and forty kids that are qualified for that and there's a point two-two weighting, so that comes down to fifteen point eight total kids or the weighting times the current cost per pupil of seven thousand forty-eight dollars for a total of three hundred and seventy-two thousand one thirty-four forty. Those are the two numbers, three seventy-two and three twenty-four. Uh, that is the total of the six ninety-six one eighty-two forty. That would be an application to the SBRC. Um, and if the board requests it, they will approve it because it is a local decision. But it is, it runs under their, uh, oversight to give us that authority in our budget. And then again, it's a local decision of how the district funds that with cash reserve, um, level when we approve property taxes in March and April.
Questions for Michael?
Um, so with the ELL students, we only, um, budget for five years for them to become proficient? Is that what, I mean, I'm.
No, it's a good question, it's a really good question. The, the state provides funding, supplemental weighting funding for five years as per the school finance formula, which is up from three years, a while back, they used to do, uh, can't remember what the percentage was for three years. And then the legislators voted to do point two-two weighting for five years. But a lot of times it takes more than that, so then there's, this is kind of the compl- um, the complementing law that says, we, the state's not going to give you money, the supplemental, but you can go back for, um, the supplemental, but you can go back for authority to spend money on them in that sixth year and seventh year. And so that's what this is. So that's a real, I mean, it's a good question.
So we'll get out, log over.
Yeah, so that way you get, you, you have the authority to, to spend money on them and to have money for them to do that. So that's what we're, and actually, do you remember at the last meeting, I think when we were talking about the ELL budget and we talked about whether it was called ELL or LEP? So anyway, the, we talked about that, the, the task force at the state level that talked about funding, the recommendation was point three-nine supplemental weighting for seven years. That's what they believe is the cost that's associated with a, a, a student who has English language needs, point three-nine for seven years. That recommendation has gone to the State Department and the legislators have seen that. They have not yet acted on that. They, they did act to move it from three years of supplemental weighting to five years. So they did, they've done something, but they have not gotten to the recommended approval, the recommended funding level, but they do have this. So if that helps a little bit.
Is there resistance because certain areas don't have the need?
It's a, it's a, um, it's priorities. You know, there's not, there's not endless money. And so they, they did, you know, each year, it's kind of like the, some of the other things that they've tackled to fund. So that, with that transportation, they've been tackling a little bit and adding more to that. The per pupil expenditure, they've added the five dollars per year to try to equal, I think it's called per pupil equalization funding. So they do tackle that, but they just, it's prioritization. So they've done something, but they haven't gotten to that full recommendation.
Is there any variance for when a student, age-wise, enters into the program? Is it, no funding different if you come in at K or five or eight?
No, the, the funding is the years of service are based on proficiency, English proficiency. And so there's an ALPA test that students take that would tell us when they are ready to exit the program. And then even after they test proficient, there's still a couple years of monitoring. I believe it's two years. Steph, is it two years of monitoring post-proficiency? Just to make sure. So there's a, there's a process and it's data-based. And it's not just one test. There's several things. There's speaking, hearing, speaking, listening, language. Yeah, there are five, okay, five different areas that they, they test on. And so then they have to rate a certain score before they could potentially be exited. And that's governed by the law as well.
So if they exit be four or five years, then they drop off for that year, right?
If they're proficient, yep. If they're proficient, they, they could exit after one year. But then they would go on that maintenance. And I don't know that we get funding for maintenance. I think we keep them on that and we still support them and just check in. And I think they still have to test one more year just to make sure that they're maintaining, so.
I'm not going to ask for a change, but I, I think, excuse me, I would prefer the wording on the last sentence would be to be potentially funded.
Sure.
By the twenty-twenty-one cash reserve levy. So this is not a commitment.
It is not.
To levy cash reserve to support this. This is just identifying the mechanism that if funded, where that would come from.
Which could be funded or, yep, potentially funded. Yep. And that, that is always the case because this is a two-part process. We're going after the authority right now through the SBRC, but it, it isn't backed by cash until the board votes on that, and that happens in March. So this is just the permission to spend, but it's not, it doesn't raise property taxes. And this vote tonight does not change property taxes at all.
Thank you. Any more questions? Jane or Michael? Okay.
So, all in favor of approving the, the SBRC committee requesting a twenty-twenty-one modified allowable growth funding totaling six hundred ninety-six thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-six to be funded potentially by the twenty-one, twenty-two cash reserve levy?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Chair votes aye.
Motion carried six-oh. That concludes our action items on our agenda. We will now take it to Dr. Lindeman for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Excuse me. Just a couple things tonight. First of all, the majority, as I have in every superintendent update, I want to spend some time talking about the return to learn plan and just, you know, sharing some information, not only with the board, but also with our three viewers and the public. So just, just a few things. You know, we're continuing on with the return to learn, monitoring our plan very carefully, modifying when we need to or when it's appropriate. We had shared some information last week about our positive cases. There was a letter that came out from, a joint letter that came out from the Black Hawk County superintendents that, and, and in joint with the Black Hawk County Public Health about our cases. And, and I think the courier covered that as well. So it was just talk, and then the Waterloo Schools published some information, just some data about where we were on cases. So it does remain that although the cases are very much growing in Black Hawk County, we've watched those numbers very, very carefully, that same parallel would not be, that, that just would not parallel with what we're seeing in our buildings with the number of positive cases and the quarantine. So those numbers don't, aren't synonymous or aren't parallel. But we are seeing, we are seeing rising rates. I had, I know that we had one building last week that we sent something out to parents and said, we're, we're going to another level of precautions. And so, and we are doing that as, as we need to. There is strong evidence that the masks are working for us. We are seeing when the masks are worn by staff and students in our buildings. There is, you know, there's not much evidence of transference on that. Kingsley is doing a rock star job of working through our, our staff cases. He's been getting, matter of fact, he will be humble, too humble to mention this, but I know he was here the, the vast majority of yesterday working. And then this morning, he, I think he started getting calls five, five fifteen, five twenty, where people are calling him, here's the situation, what do you think? Do you think? And so he's, he's kind of got it down to a science. Unfortunately, he's, he's really figured out a system. Unfortunately, he's had to figure out a system to do that. So continuing to work on that, watching those numbers. They, you know, last week we had published a number of zero point two-nine percent of our students had tested positive. I did get a couple of questions from our public saying, you know, are you sure it couldn't be, you know, are, are you sure that, you know, there might not be another kid? And I said, you know, it's, it's always possible. We work very, very closely with Black Hawk County. And so, you know, somebody said, I think it could be double that. And so if, if that were the case, I, I don't believe that is because our, our data's, I mean, we work very hard on our data. But, you know, even if it were, then that would take it from point two-nine to, you know, double that, right? So point, point five-eight. So we are definitely sitting under a one percent of our students positive, but we're watching that very, very closely. We've seen some, some changes in that. And then we do have, we have other students who are quarantining. So, and Kingsley's going to correct me if there's anything that I, I told him that he had my permission to hop in if there was something I.
No, I was just going to mention in addition to, you know, we, we talked to Black Hawk, just so the board knows, as you're answering questions, we talked to Black Hawk Public Health on a consistent and regular basis. And so as Jane was articulating, or Dr. Lindeman was articulating, our transition related to a couple of buildings, that transition didn't occur until we talked with Black Hawk Public Health. And so it's, it's a constant conversation. That was about a thirty-minute, forty-minute conversation about what additional mitigation efforts are happening as well. And, and just so people know, we are looking at it at the individual building level as well. And so I think that's where the data, as people are, are maybe concerned out in the community, our staff are obviously concerned. We are looking at that at the individual building level. And we still, as Dr. Lindeman pointed out, we aren't seeing the same levels or numbers of staff out in comparison. And we have to pay attention to, I just actually got off the phone, the principal during our board meeting, that there's a couple of things happening at this time. Not only are we necessarily having, you know, COVID-related absences, but this is generally around the time that we have other types of absences. Just from being on the phone and talking with a staff and also talking with medical professionals, both at Unity Point and Emergency One as well, the flu is happening right now. There's so many other things that are impacting our staff. We have staff on leave that you see on a regular basis. And so it's so tough because COVID is such a, it's a pandemic. It's a, it takes our entire focus at times. But there are other things that are affecting our staff that, that people just aren't aware of, that you just should know and have that information as you're engaging with the community.
Since you just jumped in, I'm going to ask a quick question. So, you know, as we all are dealing with the situation, how is that strained? How are we handling that with our staff?
That's in the rest of my update.
Oh.
Just, but you can stay there if you like. And if you want him to answer, then I'll just cross it off my list. The, the, the staffing was my, that's one of my bullets. He's just going to stay right there. So let me, let me answer some of those and then we'll go back to that. But thank you. So I, my second thing, with the, the numbers who are quarantining, I've been talking consistently with superintendents of, I think I talked with every superintendent twice in the Black Hawk County today, also talked with some other UENs. We all are running very, very similar in numbers, which is very unique. And I will say, all of the superintendents that I'm talking to have the mask mandate. There are superintendent or districts that don't have that, and I have not talked with any of them to see what their numbers are. Most of them are running just slightly over four percent absences. By the time you add the positives and the quarantines, the students who are quarantining are students who have, you know, maybe there's somebody positive at home. And so they're at home quarantining during that required time. So we're just running a little over four percent for that. That is very, very consistent from, I think, every district in, that I talked with today is right in that ballpark, four point two. I think there might have been one that was three point nine and one that was four point six, but right in that amount for COVID-related absences. So originally, we were monitoring multiple times each week. I would be on, I, I, I'm going to tell you, we are now monitoring multiple times every day. We're checking the numbers because with the county, with the county rising, it's really important that we are, we are staying, you know, there were, there were weeks, a few weeks ago, we had zero students positive in a, in a whole week. That isn't true right now. So we are just monitoring that very, very closely. Staffing was my next thing. So staffing is certainly something we are watching very carefully. We do have a couple of buildings that we have had to pull some tricks out of our bag to make sure that every room was covered. Kingsley's doing some, you know, make unique and innovative things with substitute and, and looking at, you know, whatever we need to do to make sure that we, we are staffed, we are using staff in unique ways. I was out in a building this morning and said, I can cover for you for a little bit. I mean, that, that's, that's what we're doing right now. We have some buildings that really have had very little staff issue. And then we have some buildings that have had some significant, one in particular that has had some staffing issues. And we were meeting with them multiple times a day to make sure that we're covered. I know Kingsley mentioned to me today that there was even a modification throughout the day from eight o'clock this morning on that building. So we're just continually working on the staffing. Shifting, yeah, I mean, this is calling, and this, what we're doing, I, I'm going to be honest, it is not unique to Waterloo. We, I had a meeting at four o'clock this afternoon with the superintendents of Black Hawk County, and we're sharing, you know, strategies. And I heard that consistently across the board. We might have to pull this teacher from over here and have him over here for a couple of days. Really monitoring that to see what we can do. Do you want to?
I mean, two points with that, Jane. Our, Dr. Lindeman has mentioned just the staffing issues, but I want to be clear on two things. One, you know, our policies in relation to staff being potentially exposed, or whether in the classroom or outside of work, are very liberal. When I say that, I mean, we err always on the side of caution. So if staff can't remember, or they don't know, the time that they may have engaged in a student with a positive case, or even outside, you're going home. And so I think to, to Jane's point, the only difference that I feel like with other districts that people don't know about, we may have a larger number of staff out because our policies are, you know, I, I don't, I mean, as Jane mentioned as well, it's, you know, you're, you're out. You know, if you have, if there's a question, if there's any type of, you know, we just err on the side of caution. So I just want people to know that because there's been some community chatter just around, you know, will people are being forced or have to? And that's, I actually was on the phone today with a community member or parent saying, that's absolutely not true. I can tell you our numbers right now just based on the conversations we're having. So that's just an important point. And the second point, I can't remember. So thank you.
Well, the second point I was going to make is that we are seeing, one of the things that we're working with, and I asked Nafisa about this today from Black Hawk County Public Health, the, the COVID testing is taking a little bit longer right now. Where we may have gotten results sometimes in one day, we are now pretty much to four days. And I know, I know they're going to be closed on Wednesday, that I think the state office is going to be closed on Wednesday for Veterans Day. And so that could delay things. We're holding staff out. If they have symptoms, we're waiting till those tests come back. And so if it takes four days, that really changes things a lot. And so in previous weeks, we might have gotten back in two days. So a student, you know, they may have symptoms and we're not sure. So we, they do testing and they're out for a couple of days. That's different now. So they're out for four days, maybe five days. That's, that's causing a, an extra burden. We understand it, but I do just want to point that out, that that is also contributing to some of the staffing issues. Let's see. We have the ability, and I think Kingsley mentioned this, we have the ability to make decisions on an individual basis rather than a whole district. That has been a long conversation about whether, you know, which things need to be applied across the board and which things don't need to be, you know, maybe it's, one building has a particular need. And so we are, we are definitely capable of doing individual responses as needed. And that was, that was shown last Friday by what, what we did with one of our buildings. We had to, you know, we met with the staff and had conversations about, here's that next level. So still serving our virtual students, that's part of our return to learn plan. We did offer, as we said in our return to learn plan, that we would offer an opportunity for virtual students to come back. We've been continuing to monitor those numbers and really watching. I think the board was very clear about trying to whittle down the numbers of students that are the, the staff to student ratio. And so we're working very hard on that. We continue to meet with Edgenuity every single week. We met again. We haven't done our meeting for this week yet, but, well, it's only Monday, so we didn't do it today. But on Thursday, we met with them and they have put an entire team. So when we come together with our entire team, they come together with theirs. And so that's been very helpful in putting, pushing out information to our parents. If you have any questions, if you have a question on Edgenuity that you think is not, is, is biased or incorrect, screenshot that. And, and we have parents who are sending those and we are very grateful for that. And so we send those in and they go right to their technology team. So that has, is much, much better.
So have they, have they responded?
They have responded to those. We, when, when we met, we've met with them twice now as far as their whole team. And so passing along questions, and there have been a couple that they've said, that question absolutely should not be on there. We're taking care of it right now. And so they are either completely taking it out or modifying it, or there have been a couple of cases where the answers, options were not correct. I think I gave you an op, I think I shared one at a previous meeting where the question was something about what's the pronoun in the sentence. And the, the answers, the options were not even words that were in the sentence. So, you know, they, they fixed those and they have been much, much more responsive and, and letting us, you know, letting us share with them. Stephanie sits in on every, Dr. Mohorn sits in on every one of those meetings, as does quite a few people from her team. So we feel that that is definitely on the right track. Madeline Ridgeway has been, one of the roles of her job is to really work as a bridge between, she takes, she does a lot of the calling of parents and listening to, you know, concerns and passing those along. And so the question that we keep asking her, what are you hearing from parents? And so she does report a slight improvement in what we're hearing from families. And so that, that just needs to continue because we still have distance to go on that. Another thing, we're working very, very closely with a lot of groups. I think I've mentioned quite a bit of that. I think I mentioned that, superintendents, UEN superintendents, Waterloo Education Association, especially Black Hawk County Public Health. And then attempting to, the, I guess the last thing I would say on the return to learn is, we are spending a lot of time, rightly so, attempting to anticipate those next issues and next steps. Last spring, we really did not have anything to compare to. So that anticipation was really tough. We just didn't know what to, what to see and what, you know, we just had no clue. Now, that is not necessarily the case right now. We are able to pull numbers, you know, what, what happened in June, what happened in August, where are we? Of course, this is different right now, but there is some, there are, there are some cases, many cases where we can call somebody and say, hey, we saw that your numbers were this. What are you thinking right now? What are you doing? What did you do last week? And so I think that is, you know, while the virus is definitely, it's still novel, we definitely know more. So that's some information about return to learn. We're going to continue. We are working on a frequently asked questions document that we are hoping will be live by the end of the week. It looks pretty good right now. We're having, you know, others submit questions. And then that will be a growing document. We intend to put it in as a Google Doc so that we can continue to update it versus a PDF, which is kind of a one-time thing. So I think that will be a, a good, a good document and, and working with community groups too. So that's return to learn. And then my last thing, I just wanted to mention, we had something go out with, we're working on right now, the eighth grade registration. And I just wanted to mention that too. It's really relevant right now. Especially relevant to me because I have an eighth grader this year, and so that's a new process for me. And so working through that, I will take all, any and all insight and suggestions too. So I know we were sitting down last night just talking about, you know, looking at the classes. And what happens, I, what I'm already discovering is that when you look at the options available for the eighth period day, the list of what my eighth grader wanted to take. the list of what my eighth grader wanted to take, to take was about thirteen. And so I'm like, well, that's not gonna fit. So we're gonna have to make some choices. And so having those conversations is really, it's a new thing to do as a parent. I've done it many times as a, you know, principal and superintendent. But anyway, so I just remind eighth grade parents, we are here to support you, we are here to help you. We have sent out quite a few references. There's a video that has been watched, actually, I think several hundred times already. So that's good. But we still have about seven hundred and fifty eighth grade parents. And so we're hoping that it will be watched more than seven hundred and fifty times because we really do want parents to watch that, to look at the materials that we're sending out. The counselors are in the classrooms right now, working. I think the, the four, the four middle schools have done a really good job of scheduling and letting parents know when they're gonna be coming in. I know I got mine as a, as a parent as well. So I think that's, that's great. Parents, if, my message to you would be that if you need help, if you need support, if you have questions, call your middle school counselors, call anybody, you know, you can call the central office. We stand ready to help because we believe that that four-year plan is really critical. It's not, it's not set in stone. It's always able to be modified. But it, it really matters what you, you know, what you plan. And so we wanna help students be whatever they wanna be and open all the doors. So that would be my report today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jane. Dr. Lindeman. And we will start, I have my list here. India, we will start tonight with India.
I just had two questions about your report. Attendance overall? I'm curious about, like, not, you know, you keep talking about COVID attendance, but what's attendance like? People just, like, have a headache or have, or just regular sickness?
Yep. So, and I can, so we run, our district has run approximately ninety-three percent average daily attendance for a number of years. I mean, that's, we've been running right around, the state's rate is just slightly higher than that. I believe they're ninety-five, ninety-five and a half percent of their students in attendance on average. And so we are running, right now, we're running about ninety-one and a half percent attendance. So we have eight and a half. It varies by day, I will tell you. It varies by day. So we're tracking both. We, we have not, I know there's a threshold of ten percent. We have not hit that. But we are, you know, we're running about, and, and the attendance, the, I should, I should also say too, that ten percent of threshold that is in Senate file twenty-three-ten, whatever was the Senate file that governed that attendance, that actually is COVID-related attendances, which why, is why I share with that because people will say, what is your attendance to ten percent? That's actually the COVID-related absences, all of your quarantines and your, your positives. So actually, I don't even know that it includes quarantines. We include quarantines because I don't think you have to, but we do. So when I say four point three-seven or whatever we're at, I'm not sure what we were at today, but I think it was right around four point three. We, we look at that, but I think we're running about eight percent right now, eight and a half. Again, it varies by day.
Okay. And I know that we, I had asked this question about busing. They don't really share that attendance as far as how they're doing. Am I correct about their numbers?
The ridership, the ridership?
Not the ridership, the bus drivers.
Oh, the bus drivers. Um, I don't know that we have, I, I actually don't know that number. I, they, they have substitutes. I'm sure that they have people that are working at three in the morning, getting calls from people and making sure that buses, bus routes are covered. Do you know about how they are filling their, I mean, we don't hire their drivers, so they have a process, I'm sure, by which they fill it?
We don't, but, you know, they had about four substitutes that we were looking at with our current drivers that we have. However, if there was a potential issue with one of the drivers, similar to what happened today, unfortunately, we are, we do become aware and they need to let us know. And so, you know, obviously, if there's an accident, they let, you know, Tara, Marty and Dr. Lindeman know. Same process and protocol in the event that, you know, there was a driver that was exposed to COVID or tested positive. We need to know just in case it affected our students.
Right.
Right. And that would be part of the contact tracing. But as far as if some, if there's no contact tracing required for one of their staff members, there, and there's no, it doesn't need to involve us. Maybe they got sick on a, you know, a time when there was no school and there's no need to do that. Then they don't have an obligation to report that person to us, but they would still have to go through the regular avenues of that information going into public health. They just wouldn't share that with us for HIPAA. But they're the only employees that are not our employees, so everybody else we would know about.
And I just asked that, more that question more, like, if there's, like, six out, that's buses that are, you know, that we don't have bus drivers.
Well, and that's what, that would be their, that's their responsibility to fill their buses. And so I'm not sure what process they use to, to make sure every bus is covered. I would guess it's similar to us. I mean, I, you know, if, like I said, I, I'm, I may be subbing in a classroom and, and Stephanie may be subbing in a classroom. We don't, I mean, you're gonna have to do what you have to do and they may have their director driving. So that's.
And I have my C D L as well.
And, and Kingsley has his C E O, so.
They just get a student to drive.
No, I can, I can do it. I got, I still got my.
That's an insight for anybody who's watching, so.
I still have my C D L to drive it. But real quick, Jayden sent something that was just really important about our process. You know, even though we do contact tracing on our end, I think the community thinks that's where it stops. Marla and I get calls and emails almost every single day about Black Hawk County and the information they get from hospitals and/or other individuals. So if we miss something, or even basically, usually it's to confirm what we already know. But if we miss something, we then follow up with the staff members afterwards. That's just been something that people have missed because I don't think they know that, again, we do our contact tracing, but if there's anything missed, Black Hawk County is handling it on their level. And anytime there's any relation to the school district, they email us on a secure message, you know, email about a staff member and who they may have potentially been exposed to. And so we follow up with them as well.
Yeah, it, it truly is a joint effort between Black Hawk County and us. And, and there is a, a sharing of information for the public good. I mean, if we, if we need to quarantine somebody, or we don't quarantine them, they do. But we can quarantine on their behalf, so.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Yep.
So I, I wanna appreciate the people presented tonight, the Viziar, Jeff Frost and company, and what, what they brought to the table and some of the nice partners we have are donating stuff. But, you know, part of it also reflects to, you know, we hear more about, you know, we have needs that we're struggling to meet at times. And I'm sure other school districts out there, whereas, whereas arts, whereas English language learners, it's transportation for some rural districts and stuff. And I, I just think it really says a lot to where Iowa as a state needs to really think about what we're dedicating to education and are we really truly funding it to what we have always claimed to be? You know, that's one of the things, my mantra was, Iowa's like, oh, the great education system. But when you see on this side, you're like, it gets you concerned, you know, are we really funding it the way we should? And, you know, districts should not be struggling to meet needs like at, like some of ours we saw tonight, so. But a big thanks to our partners that do help us fill some of those gaps where we don't have that, so.
Thank you. We'll go with Esther.
I don't have anything this evening.
Thank you. Stacy?
Okay, I just have a few things. So during this time, since we are staying, you know, open, even though there's a high positivity rate in the community, that have we cut down on, like, athletic practice and, like, are we not doing anything like that? Or what, what are we doing?
The, the, the middle school that I talked with, for example, Hoover, right now is on a canceled practices because their, their levels warrant that next level. So right now, that is the only building that we have canceled the practices on. We are doing the other, we're still following the regular return to learn plan for all of the other buildings.
I was, I have just been looking through the C D C stuff and, you know, when, I mean, we are at a very high transmission rate. It's, it's scary. It's much scarier than even in March. So I have trouble being comfortable with it, but I also don't want to pull kids. So I kinda asked some kids what they thought. And they want to do well academically. That's something that they've really talked about. And especially seniors, like this is a big deal to them. They, but they also are scared because a lot of them have family members who are at risk and they, they don't want to contract it and bring it home. One of them's like, what's more important, health or education? And it's a toss-up when it comes to the kids. They don't quite know which one they wanna go with. And so also, I've been looking at different school boards, going through videos and stuff and how they do their, how they make up the, the board. And something that really struck me was that they had H R report, treasure report, facilities report, et cetera, so that we would still be able to ask those questions that, excuse me, that we can't right now because of just the way that our policies are written. So that would give it that time. Also, they have a student rep. And I just think that that would be something that we would find very, very helpful. And I think that it would be something that would connect us with the kids. Lastly, I have spoken to somebody whose job is to, he works for a medical company doing their, their web privacy. So I asked him about HIPAA disclosure. And he said, a HIPAA disclosure would have to contain both medical information and the P I I for an individual. General COVID data would not be a disclosure unless the population base was so small, an individual could easily be identified. So I really, I, my feeling deep down is that we should be telling the community. I, I don't think that they would find anything wrong with it. In fact, where our levels are, I think that they would be impressed. So that's, that's where I am. And I, I'd like the board to just consider it. I know that it's Jane's decision, it's under her purview, which is something that I've been thinking a lot about. And I think that because we are doing really well with the numbers, that it wouldn't hurt anything to let the public know. So anyway, thank you, guys.
Lyle?
Yeah, first of all, I wanna clarify the, to qualify for a state waiver, there's two elements, right? One is a ten percent absence rate, and now you're saying that's actually the ten percent COVID absence rate. And the county has to have a positivity rate of fifteen percent. So depending on how much weight you wanna put on that, but we don't even qualify to ask for a waiver at this point. Is that correct?
Um, I actually think there is a, if you, if you, it's, it's either fifteen percent and the absentee rate or twenty percent. So once you get to twenty percent, you don't need the absentee rate, but you work with your Black Hawk County and you look at, and you, you look at the data of your student absences and you look at that. So while, if, if you look across the state, the vast majority, there was an article in the paper over the weekend that the vast majority of districts are twenty or higher right now. So of, not district, I take that back, counties, I'm sorry. The, yeah, I, I said that wrong. Luckily, I caught myself. Otherwise, that becomes the quote in the paper. So the, you know, the, yeah, no. So the, the vast majority are, matter of fact, I think if you look in this area, I don't think there's really anybody who's not under twenty. So that, that's what that looks like.
And, and just to clarify, the, the point two-nine positive rate that we're giving should not be confused with the county positivity rate because that's of our total population of students, point two-nine, whereas the county is, whatever it is, twenty percent of those who had reason to be tested. So it's two totally different things, but we kinda use the same terminology. So my last question is, what services do we provide for those students that are on quarantine? Can they be on edgenuity during that time?
No, they don't join edgenuity. Do you wanna, do you wanna take that one?
Do they get lessons planned from their teachers? Or do they Zoom with their teachers?
They don't Zoom with their teachers, but they do get lessons from the teacher. So it's just like if you had to have your wisdom teeth out and you were out for a couple of weeks, or had the chickenpox or something. So the teachers do provide work for those students when they are on quarantine.
So why can't they do edgenuity?
Because it's not as simple as just jumping on edgenuity. And they're in a different place than what they're learning in their classrooms. So we want to continue what they're learning directly in their classrooms. We don't want to miss, them to miss that ten days or fourteen days of classroom instruction.
And there is quite a bit of work behind the scenes. If Matt O'Brien were here with you, he, with us, he would tell you the steps that we have to go through.
Yes, not just jumping on, yep.
You send the name in, you get this and whatever. So it's not necessarily a two-hour turnaround. So. Yeah, it's, yep. And, and they're coming back, right? They're coming back. So we, the, the teachers.
Coming back two weeks later. But no, I've, I've heard, that's my number one complaint, is kids that are out on quarantine are, you know, I don't get any support. My teacher doesn't give me, you know, anything. I can't get on edgenuity, which I should be able to do because, you know, at least I learned something there.
Do students have the option to do a Google Meet or a Zoom while they're out to meet, to see the teacher? Do they have that option?
Yeah, if the teachers will do that, yeah.
They will do have meetings with the students and just say, I'm not understanding this lesson that you, okay.
We're, I'm sorry if I just cut you off. I apologize. The, the one thing that we're also working on is, you know, we, we had done last spring while we were closed down, we did a pretty diligent effort to increase technology skills. So with that, we, we had, you've heard us talk about Screencastify, which is a thing that you can have, the teachers can just log in. They can do their lesson and their picture's down in the corner and they're teaching. And so we are working, continuing to work. I've seen it, I mean, in, I mean, Stephanie, Kingsley and I all have kids in the system. So we get a chance to experience it, not only as leaders, but also as, as our, our own children. And so we're, we're, we're seeing that number of, of teachers who are doing, sometimes they're doing a flipped classroom where they're teaching, you know, the kids can watch the video at home and then they come back and they process and work on the, the assignments at work instead of homework at home. They're watching the lessons at home. And as we look at the positivity numbers, we sent something out, in our communication last week, we talked about, we, we need to be ready for everything. And so if we need to go to virtual for whether it's a grade level or a building or whatever that needs to be, we are working with staff to make sure we are ready. Last spring, we didn't close down because of our numbers. We closed down because we weren't ready. We can't afford to say, hey, we're not ready to do virtual right now. We, we are, you know, we're working constantly and we have a professional development on Friday, which we're always grateful that the board approves days for our professional development. And the parents understand that we do that. I, we always appreciate that. So, I mean, that's a big piece of it, making sure that they are ready, making sure that they're reviewing. We just talked about today, pushing, re-pushing out the Screencastify, making sure everybody has done that lesson again because you may need it. A lot of people are using it, but it can't be just by chance. It has to be everybody being ready to go. So that's, I mean, that's some of the things that we're doing behind the scenes. We hope we never, we hope we push out that professional development and we never have to use it for virtual. But if we do, we need to be ready.
I, I guess I think we need a hotline for those kids that are off on quarantine because it's not a priority, I guarantee ya, that every teacher has, that kids out, you know, it's, oh, too bad, you know, we'll deal with it when they come back. That, so there needs to be another message.
Parents would though.
Because we're telling them, you can't come to school.
That is not a, that is not a concern I've heard. So I, if parents are having that concern, that's, that would be a surprise to me that I haven't heard that. So if they're.
I have heard that.
Okay. So I appreciate you telling me that. I, I would want the parents to call their, their building, talk to their principal, make sure that they are doing that.
And, and the same response. It's not a priority.
Okay. We'll, we'll definitely look at that. That is not something that we are hearing. So we'll.
You had mentioned.
And you can always let us know that, I mean, anytime, you can call us and tell us that you've heard that. You don't need to wait.
You mentioned Madeline Ridgeway was making contact to the parents on, who are doing edgenuity, who do on virtual?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed this.
No, no. She has been working a lot with, if she, she, the virtual, virtual@waterlousschools.org, that email address and the hotline that we have. So if people just let us know that, then she will, she will call them back or she'll get the right person to connect. So she kind of mans that, woman's that. She can staff that. So she, a lot of times will call them back. And if they send a question or they, there's a, there's, you know, Facebook, somebody Facebooks, inboxes us and says, I have a question. She may call back and say, tell me more. I didn't quite understand what you were doing. Let me figure out who'd be the right person.
Thank you for saying that out loud, just in case parents didn't know. You said that out loud and you marketed it very well. I didn't know that. So I'm glad that was.
Well, and, and if they, if they email that virtual, I mean, we've, that's in the handbook, the virtual handbook, that's our best way. Either call us or call, or, or go that, the, the virtual email address is a great way to connect with us. And so I think I've said that at other meetings too. So we want. I think I've said that at other meetings too, so we want.
But has there, has there actually been more getting back to people, though, because, I mean, that, yeah, there was a, a big issue with, then, you know, them trying to email and call, and it just didn't happen.
Well, and what has helped Stacy too, is that.
But they feel better now, like, a lot of them have contacted me, they're very happy.
That's what I said, we've had a lot, a lot better response. One of the things that has been, you know, hindsight, I guess, is twenty-twenty, I've shared this before, we, we tried really hard at the very beginning, we originally said we are gonna have people stick and stay until the, the trimester, before we do that, you know, and, and we just, we didn't hold tight to that, we, we got a lot of parents who said, you know, this, you know, we really need to make the switch, we spent a lot of people time, really just trying to get people where they wanted to be, and some people hadn't necessarily, I mean, I think I shared before, we had some people, you know, attempting to switch back three or four times, and we said, we just, we can't use up our staff time doing that, because there's only, you know, so, once we've held tight to that, we have really been able to truly allocate lots of time to answer questions, and I think that's why you're seeing a switch over.
Yes.
I know that there's a virtual Facebook page, and the comments on that, we monitor that, well, just to make sure if there's something, you know, sometimes they'll put it on there, but they don't ask us, we wanna know, so that we can get back with them, and we are seeing a, a transition in, in the number of people, so we have allocated, really, lots of staff time, I, we did the survey, I think I mentioned before that we did a survey, and we said at the bottom, the last question was, if you wanna call back, put your name and number, and we'll call you, and we downloaded those numbers, and we divided it up, and every person who said that on that survey got a phone call. I took my list, Stephanie took her list, and we, I mean, I actually called parents, and I found it very helpful, because everybody had really, I think, Pam, you might have called a couple back just to say what, and then forwarding that to the right person, so we really, I mean, they, each person got a phone call back, so I think those kinda things help people to get that personal touch.
They said you guys put in something else, like a weekly, what is that, what do you do in every week, that they?
We've done several things, we've placed on, not which one.
There's like a weekly contact that they get, or something, every, every single week now, and that has made an enormous difference, so, kudos.
I mean, we are, we are getting, we are getting better at that, it's still, there's still a lot of bumps, and that's why I say if people will just let us know, I'm a little bit disappointed that if, if there are people who are talking to you and saying, hey, we're not happy with being on quarantine, we didn't hear that, that's, I, I'm telling you right now, I, this is the first I've heard anyone, and you haven't gotten any calls, so if you're getting those, let us know right away, because we would want to know that, so that we can get back with them right away. I would believe that I would have heard that before now, so, and I have not.
And, and, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't that we don't care, it's just that we're so busy dealing with this, all these other things, you know, and really, you know, you'll be fine, well, the students.
Yeah, I don't, I, I would hope that that would not be the case, and I would hope that they would call the building, or call us, or let us know that they're having concerns about that, because that is not a, you know, a message, but that being said, just because we didn't hear it, doesn't mean it didn't exist, I'm sending the message that if somebody is hearing that, board members or anyone, we would wanna know that, so pass that along right away, you don't have to wait till the next board meeting to tell us, tell us now, because that is something, I mean, I hope that what you would hear is that we are working very hard to provide good education for our kids, and it has been a bumpy road, I mean, I have said, it has been a bumpy road, but we have made a lot of improvements, and staff is working very hard, so, and we will, we stand ready to continue that.
I would say though, on their side of that, there are teachers out there who have done a great effort, because I don't buy kids under off days, high school level have gotten responses.
Right, your mic.
Have gotten responses from, you know, their teachers the same day and stuff, when they're, so, you know, they are, you know, particularly at high school level, I know that, you know, they're doing a, they're trying to balance if kids are off, they have questions, and they're doing some good things, so I don't wanna, you know.
Yeah, for sure.
Lyle, are you done with your comments?
Yes. Can I get one clarification on the?
No.
Uh, on, on the, if we were to petition virtual, when, if we, just say we went, just for say, does that, do we go on hold for a hundred and eighty days then, and had to put, add those up at the end, or are we?
No. No, the, it, the only way that you could, the, the way the law reads right now is a district can, in an emergency situation, they could go to virtual for two days, which buys them, you can, we can make that decision internally for two days, on that third day, it would not count, the day would not count, unless during that forty-eight hours, you've received a waiver from the state.
State, okay.
And once the waiver, and then the waiver would grant it for, I believe, up to two weeks, that they would say for two weeks, then after that time, either you have to apply for another waiver, or you come back, and so, it's a little more fluid.
State approved a waiver, then you're not, you don't have to make that.
Right, it is not a hundred and eighty-day commitment, but you would go, you would want to go after the waiver, if you were going to do that, you could do it for two days, but after that point, you would wanna get the waiver, so those days count, otherwise they don't count, so then, then you would be better off not having school at all, and putting those days, tacking them on to the end of the year.
And the waiver gives you two weeks?
I believe it's two weeks, you can apply for up to two weeks.
Up to two weeks, and then you have to reapply if the levels are still.
Obviously different, you see the state, right?
Okay, well, I, in, in what you were speaking, I guess it's my turn, the best for last. My question was, can we shut down, or not shut down, but one building go virtual, and not another building go virtual?
You can, yep, you can apply for a particular building and not another, so you do it as you need to do it, and so, just like we're applying different levels of, you know, restrictions based on the numbers, we watch those, I mean, we're, we're very cautious of that, so yes, the answer is yes.
Awesome, okay, well, besides that, I think you guys covered everything. I just wanted to thank John Deere again for that donation, that's just awesome, and we just continue to better our options and our programs with the help of the whole community. I also, my fellow board members are fighting an animal over there or something, but I also wanted to thank that parent for coming tonight, I mean, because that's a way to get your answered, and obviously with conflicting, each different, each district is different, so we have to expect that, that, you know, a district does a lot different than us, and I appreciate that, because I've been watching some other districts also, and I am so glad that we have dug down deeper and went to each building, and the numbers in each building, because that gives a clearer picture than just the entire district, so I appreciate that also. Then I just wanna thank the parents that did attend conferences, and remind everyone that Thanksgiving break will be coming, and that is the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-seventh, that students will be out of the building. Our next board meeting is on December fourteenth, at, that's five o'clock, and that'll be the only board meeting in December, and then, not shortly after that'll be our winter break, so offices would be closed from December twenty-third till January one, so that will maybe give an opportunity for some deep cleaning and healing at home, and, and just a positive, I'm sure you all heard, but a couple companies had some good inroads to a potential vaccine today was announced, so that brought the stock market up, so that was good too. But, so, I think the district is doing a great job of controlling what we can, and that's not everything, and that's not everything everybody wants, but what we can control, I think we're doing a good job, so thank you very much.
And we would continue to urge everybody to exhibit diligence, because we can, we're gonna do what we can, but, I mean, this really has to be a team effort, I saw some information come out from the hospitals today urging people, wear your masks, and so I think, you know, we're, we wanna stay in school, and so we need everybody's help, we appreciate that.
Right, so with that said, could we entertain a motion to adjourn this evening?
Second.
Second, it is eight P M., and we are adjourned, thank you.